Welcome to our joint meeting between the Finance Subcommittee and the Milford School Committee Meeting for this February Thursday, February fifth, two thousand and fifteen. Go ahead and get started, Mr. Chairman, for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, still waiting for a couple of members, but we're good. This is our quarterly meeting, we just, FinCom wants to be up to date with where you guys are from a budget point of view and where we're headed, and if there are any issues that have come up.
Alright.
And then we'll talk about where we're gonna go, or try to go, next fiscal year, and where we are this fiscal year.
Okay, alright, so I'll wait for Kathy to come back in the, in the room here, as we get ourselves started.
Is this televised?
Yes, it is.
I haven't.
I got Chad.
Yep. Come on over, Jack, you can have a seat at Mike's seat, Mike's not coming, so. Mike will be out this evening, so.
Still waiting for one more with this.
Yep. Do you wanna continue, or do you wanna wait?
No, we can go.
Okay, so, just kinda going through an update, Kathy, I know you were doing a lot, I know you were taking a lot of notes, and as we've kinda gone through looking at what our budget's looking like from a proposal perspective.
Well, don't go there yet, where are we now?
No, no, but just from where are we right now for this year? Just kinda giving us a finance update with where we are for this year, any needs or anything else?
We have a couple of issues that we're reviewing and watching throughout our last couple of months here, one being McKenney-Vento Transportation, we're approximately fifty thousand dollars over budget, but we're hoping and anticipating being able to make up that deficit throughout the rest of the school year, so we're watching every budget line possible to be solvent. In addition to that, we have an out-of-district tuition budget deficit that we're watching, however, I believe the Circuit Breaker funds, if they're fully funded, will offset that deficit with a little help from our local budget, we will have to watch that budget line as well. Other than that, we are moving along and within our guidelines and purview of the fifteen budget cycle, only two areas that we're watching.
Did, did the transportation cuts that the Governor just made affect you guys?
No, that would be regional transportation, and that is of no, right now, transportation effect for us.
Okay, so there's no, so far, there's been no effect?
Mm-mm.
That's good.
Kathy, one question I have is, the out-of-district costs, I apologize, I missed that, what's the, what's the additional demand for that?
Right now, we have approximately six students that have been, have moved into Milford and require out-of-district tuition, and the amount that we're looking at is about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Correct, above and beyond what we had planned for.
Correct.
Okay.
But I do, I do expect the Circuit Breaker revenue to help us with that significantly.
Okay, how much are you expecting from Circuit Breaker, total?
This year is one point five plus dollars.
One point five million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What were you, what were, what did we budget for initially?
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
Seventy-five cent, seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent of that?
I believe it was seventy-five percent on Circuit Breaker, wasn't it?
Circuit Breaker, we tend to budget between sixty and sixty-five percent revenue, so anything over that will be adjusted to the deficit.
And then, how about on technology, I know we just, we just allocated another?
That was all within budget, so right now, he's still working within his...
No, I got that, so, but that was sort of an over that we weren't counting on, obviously that we'd need to address, was that within, cause I said, and that's one of my questions, was that an additional budget request that we had not planned for coming out of technology budget, or we had, we had planned for the, for that expense?
He, he didn't, but it is within his budget to move forward with the map assessment of our networking infrastructure with the funds that were allocated to him in our FY-15 budget. So, as of right now, he's not in a deficit, if he had a technology issue come April or May, he may not be able to fund that.
No, I got that, I guess what my question is, is on that, and is, when we sat down and did this last year, and we budgeted our techno, and we put together all of our different line items and budget items, when it comes to the money that we had allocated towards technology, had we planned for spending the money that we allocated at the last meeting, was that, I know we're covering it within that budget, was that part of the original plan?
No.
So, that's over and above, we're, we're filling that within our own budget, though.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
How much are we talking about?
Ten thousand five hundred.
So, we've used up the money that we originally budgeted for technology, and then we found additional ten thousand five hundred dollars that we allocated towards technology.
He's using contractual monies within his technology budget that might have been used for some other issue that might come about.
Okay.
But you've already started it.
No, 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 that's different, that's not the same thing. Mark's looking at the technology budget that was proposed to us last year, I'm sorry, at the last meeting, that's next year's plan, that's a different line item, a different project, a different piece of the project.
Okay.
The money that we'd allocated, I think the original request for that, I think, was like twenty, was it twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand was what was gonna projected out on that, and then it came back at ten-five, is that?
That's correct, yeah, for the mapping project.
I mean, he, he, we haven't even talked to Paul yet about his FY-16 budget, which I saw my agenda to discuss philosophy. Alright, so you're, you're in pretty good shape, we're seven months into the year, so we're doing okay.
Yes.
How are we on Medicaid reimbursements, you have any idea?
We are where we need to be, we are not, I would like to say that we're raising additional funds, but we are not, we're level reimbursing the town of Milford with what we can for expenses for Medicaid, it's pretty equal to last year, FY-14.
Okay. Alright, so we're good. I have a list of items that I want to discuss, or talk about, or inform you of, as you guys go forward with your FY-16 budget, just so you try to understand where the town is financially, and what we have on the docket that we probably will have to pay for out of somewhere, and I don't know where that number is right now. After the last town meeting, we left one point four million on the table, cash on the table, and we left some money in levy capacity, about one-six or one-seven. We also put money on to the tax rate, we also put, we spent capital money, we put money in stabilization. What has occurred since the June meeting, the annual town meeting, and, or, I'm sorry, the fall town meeting, and now, is we've had, as you all know, the electricity rates went up significantly, and Town Accountant did a projection, estimates on what was done based on FY-14 usage. The end of this fiscal year, we're going to have to come up with about two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in extra electricity funds townwide, that includes the district, that includes general government, and projecting that forward to FY-16 costs, we're going to spend about one point one million, a little over one point one million. In, in FY-14, we budgeted six hundred and seventy-nine thousand. FY-15 will end up at eight ninety-nine approximately, and we'll be at one point one FY-16, all things being equal. That's a big nut that we have to deal with, and, and that comes out of the operational budget, so, the operational budget is getting bigger, but the dollars may or may not be getting bigger, we're not sure. And, and don't misunderstand here, I'm not trying to paint a doom and gloom picture, I'm just trying to give you facts, and so we all understand where things are and where we're coming from. Health insurance is projected to go up about seven point three percent. Retirement, six percent. We have a shortfall this year of injured on duty of about fifty thou. Snow and ice budget, roll of dice, we're guessing we're gonna be about a half a million dollars over budget, we, we budget a half a million every year, the state law says that you can budget an amount, you're allowed to go over that amount, it's the only account that can go over that, their budget, and we have to take care of it by the fall. We're gonna get another couple of feet of snow on Monday, so he needs to buy some more sand and salt, and that's expensive, especially at this time of the year, so we're probably gonna be that half a million dollars over budget. The state law also says that, once you set that number, for snow and ice, that's the number, you can't lower it ever, and it used to be three hundred, and we raised it to five, you can raise it, but you can't come back. So, we try to be conservative, and hopefully fall within the budget, knowing full well that if we don't, we don't, I mean, we don't have control over, over the mother nature quite yet.
So, Mark, if you allocate another five hundred to get through the year, does that now make the new mark, a million?
No.
Okay, so you can do a temporary adjustment to...
It, it's over budget.
Okay.
It's what happens when people go over budget, you just have to pay it out, but we're not gonna, my guess is, we won't, we'll discuss it, but I, I don't think we'll raise that number over the five hundred, it's been pretty good so far, so, this is not a good year, it happens.
Okay.
The other thing that, the other couple of items that are on the list that we have to deal with, some of it this year, this fiscal year, is Gottfried Brook. We, we applied, or the Highway Department applied for grants to fix Gottfried Brook on Main Street and Congress Terrace, and we got a grant of nine hundred thousand dollars, of which the town has to put in twenty-five percent. When the engineers looked at the project again, the nine hundred thousand was a little short. We're projecting, and we're going out to bid this month to find out, but it could be anywhere from two to three million, and that's all town money. Can't go, with the money, the nine hundred thousand dollar grant came from FEMA, and they just expend whatever money they have left over at the end of the year, and they give it out to cities and towns based on, on need and your input, and isn't, you can't go back to them for more, so, that's coming out of the town, and that needs to be fixed. I mean, it's a real problem, we have, we have houses that, backyards are sinking, and driveways are sinking, and, and so it's gonna be a big project, it'll be probably six-month project, and we have to deal with that, I, we haven't figured out how we're gonna deal with it yet. A lot of these items, we, we're just starting our budget cycle ourselves, so, you gotta backfill, and then figure out where the rest of it is. We allocated money in the fall to do a study on the dam at Louisa Lake and the bridge. I think we, we allocated a hundred thousand dollars, that's supposed to be done shortly, and we'll know in the spring, maybe another month or so, what the cost to repair that dam and bridge are, and my understanding is that we're a little late doing it, the state is on us to do it, so that's an item that's gonna have to be done, I'm not sure it'll be this fiscal year or next fiscal year. I don't have any guesses, but if I had a guess, it would probably be over a million, but I have no idea. Projects that we have ongoing, youth center project, youth center's already into the contingency fund, and I'm not, you know, they're only, they just started the project a couple of months ago, so we'll see where that goes. And then we have Woodland School, and we know that's gonna be tight, and so we have to watch that going forward. We, we keep putting money in stabilization, and we know we're gonna take it out to cover the cost of, of Woodland. By, as I said at town meeting in the fall, I believe it was, that by putting money and using free cash at the time to cover a lot of the cost of the youth center, we eliminate the bonding, which puts a stabilization account in a much better stead as we draw it down over the next ten years, it, it probably will end up around eight million at its low point, I haven't done the numbers recently, but if I recall, it's around eight million, instead of with that bond, it would have ended up around three million. And FinCom philosophically would, we try to keep two times the debt limit in the stabilization account in case of emergencies, and the debt limit is three point five million, so, if, if all things work out, and we keep putting money in every year, and, and taking out the difference, I think we'll be in good shape, as long as we have the money. In our budget for this year, FY-15, and will be in the budget for FY-16, will be a million for capital equipment, we stay within that million as best we can, and a lot of this stuff doesn't come out, the stuff that we had already talked about is not out of the capital budget. We're talking about trucks, and fire trucks, and, and snow plows, and, and, you know, all of the, the things that the town needs to, to continue its services, Parks Department as well. We've continually, over the last five, six years, have put a million to the tax rate every year, and we budget that, and we plan on doing that, can, again, in FY-16. We feel that, as the budget goes up, whatever we can try and help the taxpayer with, we try and help the taxpayer with, and, and if, if that money goes away, if we take, if we don't put the million there, then the taxpayer gets hit double, the million that we didn't put, plus the million that we gotta put back. So, we're very cognizant of what we do, we're pretty conservative on that million dollars. As I said, we, we try and put five hundred into stabilization every year to help offset the cost of the Woodland School. And the only thing, and then the IT department, I'd like to discuss that, or have you guys discuss it, what, what I would, the FinCom would like to recommend is that we pull all IT funds out of all departments and put it under him, under Paul, and then Bob, you, and, and Rick sit down and come up with a priority schedule of what needs to be done, and that way, we can track it, you could track it, we know what they're working on, and the funds are in one spot, so he doesn't have to come to you guys and say, I need twenty-nine dollars to buy a mouse, and he doesn't have to go to, to Rick and say, I gotta buy a new computer.
Doing... One of the obstacles we do face with that, though, is, is we're required by law
I know, but that's...
as a school system to have some amount of money that's allocated towards, we put all chapter seventy money at risk by not having something allocated under the schools that's spent towards, towards that, so...
That, from what I understand from Zach, that's a paper issue, when he fills out his end of the year Schedule A, they take, he could take care of that, but, again, we could talk to that.
Okay, yeah, I don't know, I don't know the financial details on that one, but...
Yeah, I checked with him to be sure, but we, you know, we'll get that solidified just to be sure, that way, we can all hold Paul and the IT department to a schedule, what I've asked, Rick and I've asked Bob, put together a schedule, I have part of it here, with dates and completion dates. I know he hired a new person, and I think that he has one scheduled for next fiscal year as well, okay, in his department, so, that cost, right now, he's about two hundred thousand in salaries, my guess, that cost is gonna be another three to four hundred thousand in the IT department, and if we don't fund this department, then we wasted our time. We're a ninety million dollar company, and, and we're limping along in the IT world, and we can't be doing that, you guys have to be brought up to technology levels, town has to be brought up to technology levels, he hasn't even talked to the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Highway Department, the Parks Department yet, and these, these are, everybody needs to be at the same level eventually, and we just have to get there, and it's gonna be hard to get there, especially if the money is tight, but we'll do the best we can, yes, sir.
And, and I think that's, that's probably a good approach, my concern is that now you have departments that are competing for funds, and we know that, we have, based on what we saw at the last meeting, there's about three hundred and ten thousand dollars that we need to do some baseline improvements, and that's just really at the high school. One thing that we need Paul to go back on, go back and do is a more holistic analysis of what the cost would be to build up the infrastructure across the entire district, let's say that number is six hundred thousand or seven hundred, I'm just making up numbers, right? Would, would you envision funding his department with that six or seven hundred thousand dollars to be able to meet those needs, or would we then be competing for some of the funds and only allocating a portion of that?
No, that, that's the whole point, Joe, if, if, if Bob and, and Rick can sit down and agree on projects and schedules, then there's no competition, okay? The town's on one side, they pay a percentage, you guys pay a percentage into that budget. We, we don't wanna do that, we wanna fund that budget from an overall perspective, so there is no competition, but if we agree on projects and completion dates, then we can all, he can be accountable to both of you guys for completing those things, and if the district is, is the higher requirement, then the district gets done. We have the same problem with capital, every department competes for capital money, and what we started three years ago, or four years ago now, I think, is that we got all the department heads in a room and said, okay, give us your five-year plan, tell us what you need, and we'll all agree that these are important in these times, we've only allocated a million dollars, so, if we're over the million dollars, department heads sit together and they go, yeah, okay, we can pass hours off for a year in order to do that because it's more important.
Yeah.
That's how it has to work, I mean, people, people can't be out arbitrarily just doing things, and, and I feel that, that the IT group, because it's so important to the town, needs to be accountable, at least to the, the two of you, and, from a financial point of view, it needs to be accountable to the town, and, and things are getting done.
Yeah.
I mean, I saw this, I see the list for FY-16, the, the FinCom tablets aren't on the list, and, and as part of that, you know, we had a whole plan to have Town Hall committees have tablets and use the cloud and not carry paper, I don't see that on the list.
Right.
Mark, if I can interrupt?
And we've already got the money for that.
That list, so there's a, there's a, I'm not sure if you have a copy, but the plan that Paul put together for the school department, that, that's, that plan that you have, that doesn't include whatever may be happening other, at the Town Hall level, any town offices, so is Paul, has someone asked, or has Rick asked Paul to put together that priority list then, for the town side?
Yeah, he's gonna have to have that, because when he comes for a budget, we're gonna wanna know.
Yeah, absolutely, we've asked and put this together on the school side, so we'd see that, and if, and I understand what you're asking to do, and if it's just a matter of a paperwork allocation of numbers, so that the DESE understands that we're spending X number of dollars for technology at each building, the one concern I do have, though, let's just say we have whatever the X number of dollars is for technology, but if eighty-five percent...
Three dollars.
Okay, but if all, if eighty percent of that is allocated for, we'll call it technology maintenance, what I mean by that is not equipment maintenance, but all of our student learning accounts, you know, whatever they may be, reading A to Z, RAS kids, you know, Imagine Learning, the list goes on, a, a big function of what we do is, whether it's our library catalog system, or our food services program, those technology dollars are all, really already spent, barring what we may have in school choice for sort of new initiatives. If that money all gets moved to a single pot, and is a prioritization, say, and this year happens to be the year for the senior center, say, to get an overhaul of their system, and now it reduces the school department's ability to access funds that they've been relying on year after year after year, just to maintain the technology services, how does that work, because our accounts don't include really any sort of capital improvements in technology, for, for better or worse, it's maintenance.
I, I think we have to work that out, Bob, I, I don't have an answer for you.
That's a concern that I would have.
I understand, I understand the problem.
Okay.
Whether, I mean, I don't think we could just, with the mark of a pen, make it all happen, I, I think we have to work towards getting to that point, whether it's sixteen for all of it, sixteen for part of it, but we have to get to that point where one guy knows what's going on in the whole town, or one department, and they can manage all of your stuff and manage, I mean, we have software needs on the, on the town side as well, the Police Department has software needs, and the Fire Department, and, and that's an annual thing. Can we do that the first year, I don't know, if we can, then we won't, and, and those funds will stay in your budget for that allocation, if we can, that will be awesome, but, my guess is, it's a lot, it's a lot to take on at one time.
I, I just wanna point out one other thing, Mark, that you have to, as you're building this plan, be very careful of and concerned about, is that whether Zach puts it in the Schedule A, and the school committee agrees to build that as part of the Schedule Nineteen expense, the agreement sheet, you run the risk of losing forty percent of those hardware expenses, because the Obama administration, through E-Rate, will reimburse us for projects such as the fiber, at forty percent of a hundred thousand dollars, you're talking about losing forty thousand dollars, they will not acknowledge funds that are spent on the town side, but if the school side maintains those expenses and can approve them through the E-Rate process and process them, we would be eligible for forty percent of that. Any hardware, software, switches, all of that expense side is reimbursable, so we just wanna be very cognizant of that, it's very similar, Mark, to Medicaid expenses, if the school has them and pays for them, we're eligible for reimbursement. Now, that change came about in October of two thousand and fourteen, where the Obama administration moved away from telecom services being part of the reimbursement rate, it is now technology, hardware, and fiber. So, I just, and, and we're putting in for that right now, on the fiber side, we, we just went out to bid, we're gonna get those bids back in about two weeks, and we're looking at that forty thousand dollars very seriously, so I don't wanna loo, run the risk of losing that.
I don't think anybody does.
And that would address the second and third priorities of Paul's plan that he put together on the school side of things as well, cause one of those was the mapping that he's proposed, but also the, the network architecture, which is, we'll address that. I, I, I just think it's important that we, you know, have this discussion and make sure that we're...
I, I, I think we need to get all the money we can get from federal government every time, no question about it, and I'll talk with Zach, and, and I'll make sure he talks with you, and maybe we all sit in a room and agree how we're gonna do this, and how it works, and, and we'll make it happen, I mean, obviously, we don't wanna lose forty K.
Yeah.
For every hundred.
And, and just...
Yeah, for every hundred.
Just so you know, too, and so the committee knows, that all those technology accounts that I mentioned, that they're for, let's say, for internet services, or hardware repairs, or contract services, Paul Blivis has access to all those accounts now, without having to go through Kathy or me for a prior approval, just, just so you're aware of that, I understand having it all under his domain, but he still has it really under his domain.
No, yeah, we, we discussed that as well.
Okay, just so you're aware of that.
Yeah.
Mark, I just wanted to throw in there, you know, you mentioned, if you spend X number of dollars, and we're not gonna get a return on that money, it's...
I'm sorry, about what?
You mentioned there, it's spending two hundred thousand dollars and not getting a return on that, and one of the things I'm concerned, you talked about throwing two hundred thousand dollars in technology, and if it's not done the right way, you, you might as well have just wasted your money, that's what you just said a couple of minutes ago.
What I said was, what I believe I said was, we wanna do it right.
And so, to that point, I am concerned about putting one person in charge of town and schools, and I think economically, from the school department, it's, it's not gonna move the schools in the direction they need to go, and you have one person, and I can, I can fully understand trying to bulk purchase things, trying to, to work with vendors collaboratively, but the amount of technology and the amount of needs that a school district has, Paul is one entity who is, does not have a school background, is not able to meet the needs of the school department, and when I look at what needs to be done in schools every single day, from the Department of Ed, to just student management, of student accounts electronically, state testing, day-to-day operations in a school system of four thousand kids, it's, it is not possible for this model to work the way it is, and I am concerned that we're gonna be taking a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, and their time now is gonna have to be spent going through lists of projects, and it's not a good use of anyone's time and the dollars that we're spending on those people, so, one thing that I would really propose that we look at is... So one thing that I would really propose that we look at is finding a person to support the schools as a technology director or leader or department head or whatever you would call it. Maybe that person collaborates with Paul, if Paul's gonna con- you know, continue to maintain the town side. But the schools are not going to move forward in this model that, as I have seen it roll out from what Paul has shared with us the past couple of times, not, not about his skill level or his ability, but I think it's about his experience and his knowledge of schools and the ability to juggle every town department you just ma- you just mentioned, police, fire, all these places he hasn't even gotten to yet. And we have tickets that are months and months behind, and we have kids that aren't learning the way they should be. We have teachers who can't access something as simple as email. And I think just looking at dollars, I mean, some po- part, part of me is talking about just philosophically the model, but it also boils down to how we're, uh, using those dollars on a daily basis, and I don't, I don't see the model being efficient.
Mark, to, to add to that too, you know, when Paul was here, uh, the last time, what I asked him to do was to also come back to us with an idea of what it would cost to outsource this. And whether it's outsourcing the school needs-
Which?
The, the IT, uh, function, you know, when I hear, you know, when you looked at the WorldCom report, the number one thing was that he's, he doesn't have enough people to even do what needs to be done. When you look at the timeline of the things that are trying to be accomplished, when you see things like the backup, uh, you know, plan being two years out, that's kind of alarming. And then he talks about needing to go and buy servers for every single school. When, you know, in today's IT world, uh, in an outsourced environment, they have, you know, you can share servers. And there's tremendous cost savings. And we're not even talking about those things. And so I asked him, you know, um, you know, could he come back with an, you know, with a report that shows us, you know, here's the cost of outsourcing it, and here are the benefits. Because what I said to him was, you know, a three-year plan and a lot of these things isn't a good thing. I mean, we need to try to condense these as quickly as possible. And you don't have the resources to do it, so how much would it cost to outsource it? Cause he could probably save you a ton of money and a ton of time. So I, you know, that, that to me, and to Jen's point, you know, have Paul manage that relationship and, but these guys are experts in trying to go out and hire people and build this department internally. In the IT world, the way it is today, cloud-based, everything, I, I just, I, I, I sit here and scratch my head. It seems like we're ten years behind the times.
I, I, I hear you guys. Um, the problem I have is that we're five years behind hiring that person.
Right.
Okay? And, and we know that. We've, we've been talking about this for five years. Um, so he, he doesn't start on the fast track. And, and to your point, um, I, I, that leaves it where we are now. It doesn't change anything if we, if we go back to where we were before. To put, to hire a person that is a, um, school technology expert is not as big a deal as keeping it in-house and having you guys hire the person. It's the same thing. If, and, and we wouldn't be able to fund it all. We wouldn't be able to fund everything to start with. Or on the other side of that coin is, we could fund it all right now. Put, throw a million dollars at it, or two million dollars at it, and, and make it happen. You tell me where we get to two million dollars. You're sixty percent of the budget.
Well, I think the question is not, obviously, it cannot be done today. There's a lot. It's a very, very long road, but I guess, so, looking at, from the school perspective, my question is, how are we going to move forward with a vision for schools? And I appreciate the town, all the other departments, they need what they need too.
But I think we are doing that. I think that the school department on this list for sixteen is the only thing on the list. These are all school department things.
Well, that's the school list that we put together.
I don't think he's gonna come back with very much from a town side because he doesn't have the resources to do it.
I think the reason why I had to take, Mark-
I think town is in good shape right now.
I've worked in a district where one person shared town and school responsibilities, and it was a disaster. No one got what they needed, and we ended up going back to the model where town had their person. I, and I can't even tell you what the town needs. I would, I would ha- I'd have to rely on other people for that information, but it, no one ever had what they needed when they needed it. And I, I just can't impart enough what it looks like when you've got teachers trying to run classrooms and preparing lessons, and they can't teach. And that is driving us backwards when we don't have the right tech support, the right tech integration support, and the right person setting the vision. And if someone is busy because town hall has a problem, and then the schools have a problem, it, it's, it's not going to get done because the, you don't have enough people in the right places with the right training and the right vision and direction.
I agree, we don't have enough people right now. And that's part of the problem. Problem we have to work on. I- in, in industry, there's usually one person in charge of the IT department. And he has people working for him that are cognizant of the needs of other departments, correct? It's, it's a matrix. We'll get to that, hopefully sooner than later. And if we, if Bob and, and, and Rick and the IT Subcommittee Group does it right with Paul, I think, I hope, we can manage the growth, and as we get more funding, improve that growth. But I, I think we embarked on this path because we, we did it the other way and nothing got done. That's how we started, and that's how we got into this situation. And from a town side especially, and, and I know from a, from a school side, we're way behind. And because the school had, was separate and the town was separate, and nobody in the town side really had the technology base, and nobody on the school side really had the technology base. We hired a guy three years ago, and he ran around putting in software and fixing mice and changing computers, and, and didn't do much. Right? And that happened for three years, or two and a half years. So the objective was to find the director, to hire the people to deal with the sub-department, to, to deal with the district and deal with the town and deal with the fire department. I think we'll get to that point, Ken. I, I, is it next year? No. Is it the year after? Maybe. You made a good point, uh, and we asked him the same thing about outsourcing a lot of this stuff. So we'll see where he comes back. But I think, I think we've embarked on this path and, and we're throwing a lot of money at it, and I think we have to, to try to make it work. If we get to a point where it's just absolutely positively never gonna work, then we'll take, we'll look at it at that point in time, and, and hopefully it won't be a disaster. I mean, because everybody here and everybody on, on the other side really understands what we need to do, and will coax that, those people to do it. And, and we just need to put some more money there, and we're willing to do that to a degree. But again, we have an operational budget, and, you know, to throw three, four, five hundred thousand at the ops budget right now is something we may be able to manage with all those other things that we just talked about, and, and I haven't even talked about the elephant in the room yet. Um, and so where do we get it from? That's my problem.
Right. And I, I think at the end of the day, what I, I just wanna make sure that we have that layer, whether it's under Paul or side by side of Paul that's focusing on education.
Absolutely agree.
And that's the piece that however we get there and whenever we get there, that's the missing piece right now.
I absolutely agree with you.
I think part of it, I, I guess the way I, I kinda look at it is that, I'll be honest with you, from a personal perspective, I actually really don't care whose checkbook it comes out of, barring the reimbursement being impacted or anything with that.
I don't either.
I think as long as we've got the, it's, I'm much more concerned with the technology piece, to Jen's point of, that's why having Bob and Rick being the person who's managing it. If it's two people, well, Rick represents the town and Bob represents the schools, that's part of Bob's responsibility is to be that, to be that, to be that advocate and to say, hey, express what the needs are. And now if he's got a direct report dotted line or however we wanna draw it from an org structure of making sure we've got somebody there that's able to manage our technology. And whether it's, you know, to Mark's point, whether it's one person that's in charge of technology for the entire town, and they say, great, I'm gonna hire three tech managers that are gonna ma- I'm gonna have one for the fire department, one for the police department, one for town hall, and I'm gonna hire two for the school department, that's, that's his job as the technology director, is to design. It's almost like he's, okay, great, you're in charge of the technology department, find, build your org structure, which right now, there isn't one. And that's, that's what, I think what you're saying too. There is no org structure. He, he literally, the poor guy, and I, I think I said it at the last meeting, he's literally been given a teaspoon and bailed a Titanic. And that's where he is right now. He's running around in circles and we're trying to get him. We need him, we need him to step back and say, no, go build an org structure and build a technology department. And we'll make sure that we get the voices, as far as the checkbook that it comes out of, and obviously the purpose of this meeting is to talk more about the checkbook than the, than the org structure.
But, but we have to, we have to understand the org structure because we, it obviously comes out of the same checkbook.
It's gonna be important, right.
Okay? So w- we all get it. Um, and, and I appreciate the comment. Uh, we have a, an IT Subcommittee that deals directly with Bob and, and Rick, and, and they're sort of technology hounds. Um, maybe not as good as he is, but, you know, good enough to ask the right questions. And, um, wh- what I think will happen eventually is that, um, technology prog- will progress so fast that we'll be caught up because we won't have to buy all this hardware and, and all of this stuff. We'll just have to. That's what I think will happen. And, and I'm a guy that, that in the, in the late sixties built and designed computers, so, and they filled rooms. And now this is smarter than the computer I ever designed, so I, I understand the, the exponential growth and it's continuing, so.
Thank you.
But I appreciate your comment.
And, and Mark, just to add to that, you know, to get to that point, the, the critical aspect of this is the infrastructure, right? We've been talking about that for, for years, and it's, right now, it's just, it's a complete mess. And that's what's taking up a lot of the time and, and the resources because they're trying to patch this thing.
Right.
Um, so I, you know, I don't know what that number is because we haven't seen that yet, what the number would be to improve the infrastructure across the district. But whatever that number is, eh, you know, would another option be to, to add it to the capital item list? And go to town meeting and say, we need seven hundred thousand dollars to, to fix the infrastructure, to give us the right foundation so that we can grow the IT department going forward?
We'll, we'll have to look at that number. That, the, the capital, we have to look at that. I mean, to, to suck up, and it could be a lot of money, that whole million dollars for just IT. Maybe we make that choice one year, and, and go to the department heads and say, okay, you guys aren't gonna get anything because this is much more important from a town perspective. That's a possibility. Um, not this, not sixteen. We need, we need a, a, a fire truck and we need some other stuff. And so, but maybe seventeen. I mean, that's a good point, Joe. Uh, I won't rule it out. And I know the FinCom won't rule it out because most of the guys on the FinCom are technology people. So we understand. All right, let's talk about the elephant in the room. Stormwater management. We've all heard about stormwater management. That's all the blacktop we have in the roofs and controlling the phosphorus and all that. We all also know, I think, that the EPA, five years ago or so, came down and said, Milford Franklin and I don't know what town it was, Midway or Millis or- Bellingham are, are, are gonna be the experiment. Um, and they want us- What?
They're backing off that now.
For how long?
Um, it's gone into a liberal state, so-
Or has it gone? Cause-
But it's not gonna happen. And the understanding on the surface is that that part of the problem may not happen.
Well, if that's the case, then we'll be in relatively good shape.
The other part is still out there, but, you know, the basics for that, RDA they call it of these three communities has got such serious question that it's become doubtful that that will happen.
All right, cause they were talking a hundred million dollars, so.
I'm gonna be absurd.
Okay. And over a twenty-year period, divide by three towns. So last time that, that Scott and Vani came to the FinCom, they said that that was imminent.
Well, that's the, the other part, the stormwater management overall issue is imminent, that is real. This is the RDA, that's different. That's the worst part of it. That's not as imminent as the ones-
All right, well, maybe it's not an elephant in the room after all. Maybe it's a smaller elephant.
Smaller elephant, yes.
Um, right now, I think we spend, I think we just allocated another hundred thousand at last town meeting. And I think Scott said, or Vani said that the, the license or the renewal or whatever was gonna be a couple hundred grand.
But the, yeah, the MS four program is certainly possible, a couple hundred grand to get that.
Yeah. So, I mean, it, it's a smaller elephant, but an elephant. So that's, that's where we are financially for, for the rest of fifteen and, and sixteen. It's up to, to FinCom to go back and figure out, you know, where we are from a budget perspective. That's why we asked you guys to level fund at the moment. Um, the, the other, um, wild card is the governor. And he said that he won't cut state aid to cities and towns. What he didn't say was that he won't increase it either. He still has to deal with seven hundred and fifty million dollar deficit one way or the other. Um, I know, cause I had Paul check, state receipts are up a little bit, town receipts are up a little bit. Uh, and he's making all sorts of other cuts that may, im- that'll impact it for this fiscal year, but not next. So we have to see where he goes, and he doesn't have to turn in a budget till, I think it's another three weeks at least. Um, at that point in time, we'll take a look and see if, if, where we are, and if, if we do get increases in, in state aid in chapter seventy, then we'll come back to you guys and say, okay, this is what you can do, uh, knowing all the rest of this stuff that we have to deal with.
Mark, could you, when you talk about level funding, can you clarify, does that include contractual obligations or, um?
No, that's level service. We, we don't talk level service budget. We talk level funded budget.
So does that mean that all the contractual obligations will be met?
Internally.
Means we got forty-one million dollars last year, we're gonna get forty-one million dollars this year.
Right.
And-
All things being equal, nothing changes.
So we get forty, we still get forty-one million dollars with no raise.
But automatically, the, there's a raise that's embedded in the contract.
Well, you guys have to figure out how to cover it.
How much?
We still only gonna get the forty-one million roughly that we got this year.
So what, what is our-
Jen, this is the worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
The worst-case scenario is we level fund the budget, and you get the same amount of money you got last year. And whatever contractual obligations you have, you have to take care of within that forty-one million dollars.
But I mean, my, the way I would look at it is, how many thou- hundreds of thousands are we obligated for in contractual agreements with our staff?
Uh, approximately three point two percent, which would be about one point three, four million dollars. And that includes utility increases and contractual obligations, essentially a level service budget.
So I'm, I'm, that, that could be dozens of teachers losing their jobs. Am I interpreting that correctly or am I?
If it's, if that's, if that's a, a true grim picture like it is, it absolutely would be.
Well, I mean, I think that's the worst case, Bob.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm, I don't know that it's gonna happen that way. I hoping that it's not because we have obligations as well, that we have to figure out where we're gonna get the money from. But right now, we're asking you to manage a level funded budget. And I know you guys are going into, into, uh, contract negotiations soon, so gotta keep the worst case in mind. Right?
So, Mark, when would we, when would you know that number?
Whenever the governor comes out with his budget.
Isn't that historically?
Usually it's January fifteenth, but they, he got an extra five or six weeks because he's the new governor.
Okay, I don't know what I thought.
So hopefully by the end of February.
Okay.
Beginning of, middle of March, we'll know. So you do two budgets. You do a level funded budget and how to manage it, and then you do a budget with a nominal increase that we've been doing for the last four years, of two percent.
You, you, well, the, the budget's one thing, but then it's the contract negotiations that's-
Um, not party to that, so that's not my problem.
So you, 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 you did a good job highlighting all the expenses that are on the table. What is the, the revenue projection look like?
Revenue from town side or state side? Town side is a little bit ahead of schedule.
It is a little bit ahead of schedule.
A little bit.
So, so la- last year we had the free cash, and we had a levy, the excess, we have the excess levy capacity. Do we envision having a similar situation this year?
We envision some free cash. It's, it's not gonna be what it was last year. Um, I, I don't know a number, but if I had a guess, it would be under two.
Yeah.
Okay? Um-
I mean, you're, you're obviously, you're asking us to make some very difficult decisions here. And I understand where, where you're coming from, but I think, I think we need to see a more holistic picture. So I don't know if that's, that's your group that comes in, or Zach, or someone else that comes in and shows us the, the financial projection and the analysis, so that we can then base our decisions on the actual numbers. Cause I, it's, it's gonna be difficult to cut teachers, uh, and it's gonna be even more difficult to cut teachers and find out that we end up with an excess two million dollars of free cash at the end of the year.
So Joe, what we've typically done is we don't act, what we do is, is we literally do what Mark just recommended, is we literally put together two budgets, and it's, here's what level funded does. And what level funded does, and we figure it out with, you know, when we work together as a committee, we literally go through and say, okay, so if we reduce this budget and we reduce that budget, and well, instead of teachers for supply spending, just as an example, instead of teachers spend, getting a, getting a budget of- just as an example, instead of teachers spend, getting a, getting a budget of five hundred dollars each, we drop that down to three hundred dollars each. Well, when you multiply that by four hundred teachers, it's significant money." And then, yes, it does, we, so we, the first thing we do is we start to look at, um, uh, non-employee costs. So, that's, so basically not cutting staff upfront. Then we look at things like, um, it's not just a, alright, we're going to, it's, the first thing we don't go to is the, is the teacher piece. We then ultimately have to go through and say, "Okay, how many retirements do we have that we just, you know, what would that mean for, um, not backfilling that?" So, we literally construct, have constructed in the past, two budgets. One of them is, hey, here's worst case scenario, what does that mean? Well, we're anticipating, and Kathy and Bob will have this information, we're anticipating, you know, five retiree, five retirees this year. Alright, well, if we replace this one and we bump these two, and how does that actually end up being? It may be that it's teaching positions. It may be that it's teaching assistant positions. It may be that it's a combination thereof. Maybe it's a, alright, we're going to take a paraprofessional and we're going to use them as a shared resource. We're going to take an art teacher and you know what? We figured it out within the schedules and yes, if we've got one person retiring, we'll bump this person over and this teacher will now teach in multiple places. So, it's, and then we do the, alright, so if we got one percent, if we got two percent, what does that look like?
The, the real, the real problem, Joe, is, is how do we manage what we have? And what I told you, what I just gave you are, are real numbers that we're going to have to spend. Um, when we do our budget, when we backfill with this information and talk with, I mean, like I said, the, the town, um, revenue is a little bit higher. They're hoping that, um, excise tax will go up because people will be buying new cars. It's been good the last couple of years. Is that going to happen again this year? I don't know. They don't know. It's a little ahead of schedule. Um, but that's where our revenue comes from. Real estate taxes, excise taxes, um, and, and some other various and sundry stuff. Are we going to have a lot of money to play with? Probably not. Um, this happened ten years ago. I've talked about this before. When, when Romney took over, he cut state funding to Milford by three million bucks. And I had to sit here in front of the school committee and say, "You're cutting your budget six, you know, two million dollars." I don't have a choice. We don't have the funds. I, I can't, all the other departments in town are small. The, the, unless you want to cut policemen, firemen, and, and highway department and services, unless you want to start paying for trash and not getting leaf picked up, uh, and all the services that we have in town because that's the areas that, that are going to get hit, that's going to be a hard sell. Okay? Um, I know because it's a hard sell. And, and I know we're not going to cut police and I know we're not going to cut fire and I know we're not going to cut the highway and clean the, the, you know, the snow and I, I, you know, I know we're not going to want to pay for trash. We just got a tremendous savings in, in trash collection from the health department on a contract that they, they did. Um, and, and that will fall into the budget as a surplus. It's over, I didn't bring the numbers with me. It, it was significant amount of money. Um, Mike, do you remember what it was? It was significant amount of money over the next couple of years. So, I mean, that, that'll be available to suck up some of this and available to cover every, everybody else. Um, the, the personnel board is coming up with a new plan for the Article Two people. We have to look at that and see, see if that's going to fly and what that's going to cost. Um, most of the departments to cut, we, we level funded expenses FY for fifteen. Most of the departments, that's all they have is salary. They don't have very much expenses. Alright, there's three people in the department and they like, like the, they, the, um, like Jerry's group, he's got two people. There's no expenses that he can cut to speak of. So... What? Let me, let me make a note.
So, the level funded budget, would it, we'd have to incorporate the contractual increases and any increase in special ed as well?
Special ed, special ed's a separate case. It's always been a separate case. We've always funded special ed. If you come back to us, like, I know you guys want another half a million dollars in special ed for next year for ELL and, and all of this, these other programs that are on underfunded...
Underfunded.
Programs, um... We will fund the increase in special ed. The question is, how do we do that? Okay? I mean, you keep, it's a lot of money, half a million bucks.
If I could just add, I, first off, thank you for sharing all the state of the town. I had no understanding of the elephant in the room, so now I know about that. Um, and it's helpful to give that whole picture.
Well, the elephant in the room used to be the woodland school. Now that's gone away and...
Well, maybe Jerry's right. This one is going away temporarily at least anyway too. Um, it's, it's a little daunting being new and trying to understand the process, so, and you want to do the right thing. And when you start talking about level funding, that gets everybody in a tizzy because everybody goes to their worst nightmare immediately.
Right.
I, I would personally appreciate if we could have some time for Zach to come and give us a little more in detail, in-depth information about the numbers, the revenue that comes in, some of the things you touched on tonight, Mark. It would help me get a better sense of what's coming in, what, what's the full picture from the accountant's perspective.
I, I can do all that, Jen. The, the, the real, the answer to the question is, we have a ninety million dollar budget and, and we've covered it less, one point four million. We haven't raised the levy limit. So, that's the amount of revenue we have. Ninety million minus one point four. Zach can go into detail in every way possible and at the end of the day, it's whatever the revenue is covers the budget. So, if the revenue is eighty million this year instead of ninety million this year, then that's the budget. You guys have to figure out how to deal with it. I, I'm not trying to stonewall you, but that's the numbers. We, yeah, we can go into detail and tell you, he could tell you exactly what the, the excise tax numbers are. He could tell you what the real estate tax numbers are. He could tell you all the other revenues that we get, but it adds up to ninety million bucks. And if it's more than ninety million, if we have to, if the budget is more than ninety million dollars, what does that mean? It means we have to raise taxes significantly to generate the revenue because we're not going to get it from anywhere else. State's a state. People buy cars when they buy cars and that's the end of the story. Trust me, if the revenue numbers were three hundred million a year, we'd be in good shape. But they're not. It's not that kind of a town unfortunately. So, I just want you to know the facts. Um, and, and when you go into budget negotiate, budget discussions and, 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 and contract negotiations, you need to be cognizant of where we are as a town and, um, what's going on. For a couple of years, we were great. I mean, we had oodles and oodles of money. And we spent oodles and oodles of money on a lot of good things. Alright, well, I think we're going to be short oodles and oodles of money this year. So, whatever extra we have, I'll throw it at Technology. And sped is sped. I can't do anything about sped unless you can get the legislators to change the rules.
And when you say special education, um, special educations and are you including ELL in that, in English language orders in that program?
Is it special ed?
No.
And, no.
Okay, because the half million dollars that you're talking about is not special ed.
Okay, then...
That's ELL, which is... Okay, and that falls under the exact same thing that we were just talking about. You were talking about that special education being an underfunded. ELL falls in the same category, which is what we talked about. So, I know when...
What's your special ed?
No, I got it.
Numbers now, it's five million or something like that, right? Four million?
For the out of district?
No, for all of your special ed.
Oh, I'd have to calculate that, Mark.
I think it's about four or five million.
So, I mean, it's something that as we go forward, as we kind of get head into our, as we continue on our budget process, uh, it's not as good a news story as we've had in the last couple of years. Um, it's something that we definitely need to make sure that we will, we will look for all opportunities as we always have in the past to, you know, our first priority is to the students and certainly to the teachers and the people that work for us as a school committee. Um, and as a school, as a school district. That's why I said children first. And to the teachers as well. Um, so, we'll go through and we'll, we got to go through the exercise and keep our fingers crossed that the state budget comes back in a better position. Typically, what has happened in the years past is we get two, we get two budgets from the governor's office. Ultimately, it's a slight...
One from the governor, one from the senate, one from the, the house.
Right. What ends up happening is, is it's then three versions. What ultimately gets financed, there's, tends to be revisions that come afterwards.
And, and you know what? The bigger problem is when they get it all done. Their obligation is to get it done by the end of the fiscal year. We've had town meetings June thirtieth because we didn't know what the numbers were going to be. We had no clue. So, that's the concern. Hopefully, they will be expeditious and, and do what they have to do in, in the manner that they have to do it and everybody will be fine and we'll manage. Because we'll manage.
So, we'll continue to, we'll continue on our process. Uh, any other members have any other questions for us? As we've, we've got to, we're, we need to transition into our regular meeting, so, uh...
You want me to give up my seat now?
Actually, about an hour ago.
Sorry.
I appreciate, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mark.
I appreciate you guys having me. We'll, uh, talk again in a couple of months. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Jack.
Those that are watching, we'll adjourn our, our joint meeting between the finance committee and the school committee. Um, and we'll transition into our regularly scheduled, uh, school committee meeting. As we get ourselves sort of resituated and reshuffle our seats here, so bear with us just a moment. Bob, are you going to come back to your regular seat or are you, uh, staying over there? Okay. Uh, so we'll, now that we have our, our regularly scheduled meetings, we're transitioned. So, welcome to the school committee meeting, uh, regularly scheduled for this Thursday, February fifth, two thousand and fifteen. Uh, this meeting is being broadcast. We do have members of the media present. And if you would like a, uh, rebroadcast, uh, or would like any additional information with regards to the broadcast and, and media of this, of this meeting, please feel free to reach out to any member of the committee. Uh, good evening. As well, let's go ahead and get ourselves started here. So, first item on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. Um, I trust all members have had an opportunity to review the minutes of the meeting. Um, so we'll take a, uh, we do need to take a motion. Just have one member rejoining. Uh, so a motion from Don, second from Joe, and all in favor of adopting the minutes? Joe, just need, uh, taking a motion and a vote for, uh, adoption of the approval of minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jason Animesh, we'll move forward. Thank you, guys. Up next, we do have invitation to speak. Do we have anyone here for invitation to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Up next, we have the Milford Public Schools Student Recognition. So, we have our National Red Ribbon, uh, Week Photo Contest winners and our Blackstone Valley Youth Leadership Academy participants. So, Bob, you are up.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if we could start with the Blackstone Valley Leadership, uh, participants and I'll ask, um, Principal Bonak and the students to come up. You should have extra chair. You might pull an extra chair over, carry or...
Thank you for having us here this evening. Um, it's, it's my great pleasure to talk with you tonight about these two outstanding students who are, um, in the ninth grade at the high school. And, uh, we have, uh, the opportunity to have students represent us at the Blackstone Valley Leadership Academy each year. And these two students, um, came forward as, uh, being, uh, ninth grade students who are interested in representing Milford High School. So, they went through an interview process with guidance and, um, in the end, they were selected. So, first we have here, Itzel Torres and we have Connor Mayer. And both of these students have been actively participating in this leadership academy since November. I believe it started November fourth. And, um, they give up, um, some time on Saturdays to go and be a part of this conference where students are taught leadership skills, communication skills, public service skills. And all of this culminates in a community service project that I actually, um, have been talking with both of the students about. And they're going to be doing some service activities here at the school. And one of the things that, um, Itzel and I recently talked about was, um, using our greenhouse um, to grow some parsley and basil and herbs and different things like that that we could be using in our school food service program. So, that's one of the ideas that we have, um, moving forward right now. So, they're involved, um, in representing us with, um, twenty-two other students from schools in our region. And, um, their dedication, um, to this program, to building their leadership, uh, skills within, um, this program benefits our school and our community. And we're, we're very proud of both of them. I'd like to give you a little bit of information on some of their activities and, um, their involvement in school and community. So, Itzel, she and her family came from Mexico because they wanted to have a better life. They wanted to have opportunities in education and Itzel wants to be a veterinarian. She, um, plays the piano. She enjoys, uh, math and history. And she's very involved in her church and plays soccer, basketball and volleyball as well. And, um, she's very interested in education and, um, her studies and being an excellent student so that she can achieve her goals. And we have Connor Mayer as well, who is also very involved, um, in the school community. He is a member of the football team, the wrestling team, and he'll be playing baseball as well in the spring. He's a member of the Best Buddies, um, program. And, uh, one of his fa- his favorite subject is history, but he really enjoys reading as well. Connor would like to go to the Coast Guard Academy and his dream is to become a commercial airline pilot. So, these are two outstanding, uh, young students that we have at the high school and we're very proud of them and their accomplishments, um, at their young age and, uh, during their first semester at Milford High School. So, well done. Congratulations.
Excellent. I'll move on to the...
Committee for any comments or questions?
Congratulations.
Great old miles for the other kids in the school.
Yeah, so, con- congratulations to both of you guys. Certainly, it's, uh, it's always great to see when, when we've got some students that are doing just extraordinary work and really, you know, hearing just the list of accomplishments and things that you guys are, uh, involved in. Um, the fact that you were able to do this additional, this additional, uh, program on top of it is, is amazing. So, thank you guys so much. Congratulations on the, on the, on the very well deserved recognition and, and keep up the great work. We look forward to seeing some more, uh, additional success and continued success for both of you guys. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to thank the school committee and I, I don't know, you in the past have brought forward about recognizing students and we had done that for some time and I want to, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the members for allowing this opportunity again because so much of the important work, you know, we had the, the previous meeting about finances, which can be a difficult meeting to digest. And then we see students who are here who are in leadership roles and so many opportunities that we have from Milford High School students to be, all of our students to be successful and to have leadership opportunities and, and to showcase that. So, thanks for the suggestion and for allowing that to happen at each of these meetings. It's, it's great to showcase the great work our kids are doing.
Thank you very much. Thanks for this opportunity.
Don.
Just to have you guys speak, because it's one thing to hear about it, but it's, can you tell us, like, your experience, what, you know, how the program is impacting your, you know, school activities and stuff like that? Just a couple of minutes.
It's taught me that, um, helping out your community with your school and all that really makes you, uh, feel good about yourself. Because it feels good to just give back to the community what they've given to you. Like, getting a good education, going to Milford High School.
That's great.
Um, my experience there, uh, it's been really good. I've learned a lot of new techniques and skills. Like, they've given really, like, good topics, like, how to show us, how to communicate with others and how to build a stronger friendship and community and help out the community. I've, I've really enjoyed that and I look forward into helping the school out and making it more fun and like, bright for others to see that it is fun to be smart and educational. I've, I've really enjoyed that and I look forward into helping the school out and making it more fun and, like, bright for others to see that it is fun to be smart and educational in this school.
Excellent. That's great.
And you have a meeting coming up at the end of the month again, right?
Yes.
And what will, what will be the topic of that meeting? Do you know yet or?
Um, uh, I don't, and, and they gave us a schedule and they told us the topic.
I don't know the answer to the question.
Each meeting has our own topic for, um, each meeting, so.
Yeah, and then at the.
We have a paper. I don't know what it says.
At the end, uh, we present our projects of what we've completed. Um, and then they give us a certificate and, from the graduation of that program.
What is the graduation from the program?
The graduation from the program will be in May. Each year, there's a, a graduating class. Last year, we had two student representatives as well. So, um, we will attend their graduation, um, at that time. And I think one of the more recent topics was about the service project. Didn't you have to do like a?
Yeah.
Community service project, a, a board about, um, leadership and service and what it is that you wanna do in your school. So, um, so we're looking forward to that.
If I could just, uh, just ask on, on behalf of the school committee, if you could let us know when that graduation is?
Yes.
If any members are able to attend. Um, I know one of the things we definitely like to do as a school committee is anytime we can support, um, support our students and, in any way, we certainly wanna make sure that we're able to do that. So, if you can just make sure you keep us, when you have that date, just let us know. So, that way, if we're able, if any member is able to join, we certainly wanna be able to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Excellent. Great. Well, thank you, guys. Thank you. Have a great night.
On the National Red Ribbon Week, uh, I don't see the students who are, who are here, although they said they'd be coming tonight. I know they were involved in a Young Marine program prior to this, uh, and maybe they're just still doing pushups or something. But, uh, just, just to acknowledge, maybe, maybe they'll come in at some point in the, uh, in the evening. Uh, but Holly, this is, uh, it was also advertised in the, um, Milford, or announced in the Milford Daily News. Um, it's, uh, seventh grade Holly Roberts and, um, her brother Paul won a national contest with a prize of a thousand dollars, uh, at the, for the school. And they were honored, they were honored as winners of the National Red Ribbon Week Photo Contest. So, I wanted the students to speak about that. And at last check, they were able to be here this evening, but maybe something's come up. So, uh, if they do come in, perhaps you just take the agenda out of order.
Yeah.
And if not, we'll look to reschedule their, their appearance.
Yeah, I think if we can, you know, sort of circle back to that if need be when those others come in.
Sure.
Um, if they're able to join. So, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is Milford Public Schools Policy Review. Um, so, the first, this is a first reading for, uh, for our student conduct and for first reading for our animals in the school. So, uh, Policy Subcommittee. I'll let you guys.
All right. Just handing out the, um, this one might be a little confusing. So, I'm handing out the original policies that we had in place. Uh, so, as you mentioned, Scott, both of these are, are first readings. Um, the first one we're gonna cover is the student conduct policy. And we, we, we took a look at both the student conduct policy, policy and then the discipline code as well. And we found that there was a lot of overlap wi- with, between these two policies. And we felt that, um, it may make sense to combine the two policies together. Um, and we also had to update some of the language to reflect new legislation that was recently passed. In particular, um, the, the new student suspension rules. And then, there was also some regulation around bullying. So, we incorporated some of that language in here. Um, and then, in addition to that, as part of the review of zero tolerance language, we felt that we wanted to add some additional language to the student conduct policy. Um, so, a couple of things to, to point out here. The first is the fourth paragraph down. It's not redlined, but this is new language to the student conduct policy. Um, so, I'll just read this real quick. The purpose of disciplinary action is to restore acceptable, acceptable behavior. When disciplinary action is necessary, it shall be administered with fairness and shall relate to the individual needs and the individual circumstances. So, I think the point there is that, um, you know, the purpose behind the disciplinary action is to correct the, the individual's behavior, not necessarily to be punitive. So, I don't know what we, what the next step may be. I know this is the first reading, so we'll get some feedback from the committee, I guess, and then go from there.
Yep. Yep. So, I'll open it up to the committee. Any feedback, uh, for members, for the members. Done.
I, I, I'd like to see what the teachers have to say about this. Um, does this meet their needs? Is the flexibility that's built into this good enough? And I only say that cause I, I substituted, you know, I was a substitute teacher here years ago. But, I'll tell you, one of the hardest things to do is to maintain a level of respect in classrooms. And it is sometimes near impossible. Um, you know, and I won't get into details and stuff like that, but I just hope that this, uh, is, you know, has been shared with, you know, the, the teachers and make sure that, you know, they feel it's comfortable, you know, that they feel comfortable, that it meets their needs and, and see if they wanna add any input.
Yeah, we've not, we've not done that. Certainly, if that's the pleasure of the committee, we can certainly circulate it to the teachers to give, uh, sort of like a public comment period or something like that.
Cause I look at this as the, the, these, these policies are there really to support them and to help them maintain control in their classrooms and to foster, you know, and, and, you know, an environment that's healthy for, you know, for learning and for the other students. So, um, you know, before we vote on it, I would just wanna make sure that, you know, they've had a chance to view it. And if they wanted to add anything to it, we'd certainly take it into consideration.
I would also say, just to echo and to add on to that, um, I think getting some input, um, just I wanna make sure we clarify, um, are we taking, are you, is it a sample size? Do we wanna involve the C T Ls? Is this something that we wanna go to the school administrators? I just wanna make sure we're giving clear direction for the subcommittee as well.
I'll be honest with you. I, I mean, I'll leave it up to Bob, but, um, I, again, I, this is, the, these policies are there to support them as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I know how hard it is. So, so the last thing I wanna do is put something and all of a sudden they come back and, you know, the language is too tight. I don't have the flexibility or, and, and we've done this so many times before with other policies. So, uh, you know, before we, you know, vote on this, if we could just get some input from them, Bob, and I'll leave that up to you. I, I really don't care if it's, you know, all of them, C T Ls or, you know, a c- a few, uh, whoever. That's. But I, I just wanna make sure they've had a chance to view it and, and if there's a concern, let's find out what it is before we vote on it.
The piece, I'll be honest with you. The only piece that I have a, um, I have a concern on is when we start talking about, when we start to define what it is and what it isn't. The primary goal is obviously to educate, not to discipline. However, the committee is aware of the statutory responsibility to maintain proper authority, uh, for learning, uh, for learning conduct by any student which interferes and, or disrupts such an atmosphere. Correct. The primary goal is to educate and not to discipline. When we start spelling, like I said, where my concern comes in, it's more of a, the primary goal is to educate. I, I'm not, and I, it maybe seem like splitting here. So, I've gotta be ca- I, I would be concerned with just putting in not to discipline because now we're starting to specify what we're not trying to do. When, in reality, in working in schools, it's not our primary goal, but discipline is necessary. It may be necessary at times, depending on what the conduct, especially when we're talking about student conduct. Um, that would be the only piece that I would just be, that, that kinda sparked my, kinda drew my attention was the not to discipline because you never know when it comes down to, from a language perspective, of how that will end up impacting us later on down the line.
Right. Yeah, well, it, in the, the, the old policy was actually a discipline code. So, it's all about discipline. That's the purpose behind this. Yeah. So, that's why that, that statement's there is that, you know, it's, the primary goal is to educate. It's not to discipline the students. So, we, we wanna get that point across. But, I mean, we're open to, I, I do agree with your suggestion. I mean, the teachers are the ones that are enforcing it. So, we definitely should get out of their feedback.
And I'm fine with, uh, identifying what our primary, what our goals are. And where I get con- where I get concerned is when we start to outline what it's not. So, even just the removal, my, my ask, my recommendation, my add would be is, is if we just amended the sentence, just to say the school's primary goal is to educate and just eliminate the, those, those words of not to discipline. And it would read, so, read, uh, the school's primary goal is to educate. However, the community, uh, the committee is aware that the statutory responsibility to maintain a proper atmosphere for learning conduct, um, for any student which interferes or disrupts in such an atmosphere shall not be tolerated. And even just moving it, again, what just bought, when we get into the, starting to really define what we do and what we don't do.
Yeah.
That's a good, a slippery slope. It's an easy, it's, that would be my, that would be my ask. I do like.
Doesn't change the concept of the policy, so.
No, it doesn't. I don't think it does. I don't think it materially changes it one way or the other. But, um, just giving us, giving the air cover for the teachers later on down the line too. But I do love the idea of having teachers and administrators as well. Those that have to live with and enforce the policy, then we can create it all we want. But those that have to live with it every day, it's definitely, we wanna make sure we get their input on it, so.
No, go ahead, John.
Just one thing we might, I just realized that this doesn't reference school handbooks anywhere. And in some ways, this, the policy is more philosophical about the way that we look at discipline and how, how we break that down into a real-life situation. Kind of what I think you're referring to is really much more, um, clearly outlined in the handbook. So, maybe we wanna add some kind of reference in this that, you know, specific instances and ways of addressing those instances are addressed in our student handbook. So, if somebody looks at this, they know that there's more to this than what, you know, kinda what's in this one policy. This is, to me, this is really an overview of the way that we look at it globally and not how we handle individual incidents.
So, do we need, um, a vote to make those changes and move it on and get the feedback now?
Nope, we can do, nope. This is just, uh, because it's just the first reading. We can go back. It's, it's together, it's to do exactly what you guys did. And thank you for guys for that, which is put some work together, give some recommendations to the committee. We'll read it. Give some recommendations back. Now, you guys will take that back with the feedback that you've got. And move forward. Then we come back for a second reading. If there were no changes and there move, and there was a motion to adopt it, then there would be a motion a second. We would take a vote. That would require a vote.
Okay.
Now, it just goes back, goes back into Policy Subcommittee.
All right.
And the next one is our, our animals in the school policy.
Animals in school. So, today, we, we don't have a policy. We, we felt that it'd be prudent to put one in place, uh, to address a couple of needs. Um, one being service animals. If there are any children that may be in need of, of some type of service animal. And then the other, from an educational perspective, um, there's been some increased press or coverage around, um, including animals as part of an educational program. So, as an example, bringing a dog into a classroom and allowing kids to read to the dog. Um, and it, it seems to have a very positive effect on, on, on their behavior. So, we, we added some language, uh, to allow for animals to be used as part of an educational program. And then, we created some language, uh, regarding service animals.
Like a tiger to discipline the kids? Sorry. It would work.
I, you know, I love the idea of the service dogs. Um, I think that's a critical, critical piece. I was surprised to learn that we didn't have anything as it related to service, service animals in the schools.
Because we've had a service animal in here.
Absolutely, we have.
Right?
Yeah, at the high school, we have a couple of educators that have service animals.
Yeah, I, it's, so I think it's, you know, I, I think that's, I think that's great. Where my question comes in is, um, when I think about the, the, the case-by-case basis of bringing animals into school for educational purposes. In theory, I, I love the idea. My concern would come in, I'll give you an example. I'd, I'd use myself just as an example. I was a student in Milford, Milford Schools. If you brought a horse in, and it was actually specifically mentioned, a miniature horse that was housebroken in the documents, um, I would've had to be out of the day. I would've, I would've been out for that day. Um, and if I was in school that day with or without allergy medication, it was a week I would've been out of school because of the hour, because of allergies. And some of the, and animal dandurs can be different than, you know, we think about it. We have, we have a peanut-free table and we have an allergy-free table and we have at the, in the cafeteria to align for that. Uh, that would be the only thing I wanna make sure that we're very sensitive to on this is, in concept, I like the idea of using animals for education when there's, and any type of educational tool we can use, I think it's fantastic. I'm concerned when we get into animals, when it starts to talk about potential health risks, um, that it could present for students.
Right. And, and if you, if you read through, you'll see there's very strong language. Um, the, the highest priority is gonna be the health and the well-being of the students. So, there's very clear language there that reinforces that priority. Um, and the, the principal also ultimately makes the, the decision as to whether or not to, to allow for the animals into the school. So, if they feel that it's gonna create health hazard, then they have the decision not to, not to bring in the animal. Um, there's also, uh, what we also included was a notification form that we need to be filled out. Um, and the form itself takes that into consideration to, prior to approving it, we need to identify if there are any kids in the classroom that may have some health issues as a result of bringing this animal in. So, we, we made, we did make that a priority, uh, throughout the, the policy.
Wouldn't it be like nice to have, if you were to bring, say, a dog in, everyone in that class brings a slip home and says, hey, Mom and Dad, they're bringing a dog in. Is it okay? You know, am I allergic to this? Some kids might not know if they're allergic to dogs. Maybe something to go home if they're, maybe fill this out and then send something home as well as a precaution too.
That was my next question. This is, what, what is the communication strategy for when that were to come, if that were to come into place with the, with the general public? High school students are gonna be one thing. Uh, five, six, and seven-year-olds are gonna be very different.
Yeah. So, if you, in the back, there's a policy and procedure. Um, so, if you look down at the second bullet, it says if the building principal would provide written notification to parents and guardians of students in the classroom.
We've used that model where I work currently and it works very effectively. And in fact, we had a dog in my school today. And the letter goes home ahead of time. You identify who has the allergies. And then, we make accommodations if students can't be around for it. Or, um, you know, if parents have any concerns, they're able to express that before the, um, event even takes place. So, I, I think, you know, obviously, the health and safety is priority. And I do think that we have addressed that in here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll tell you what. I'll just make a motion and accept that one.
Okay. Motion. Second by John. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay.
So, so that's, it's approved on the first reading?
That one's, that one's, uh, approved in the first reading. With no tigers being brought in for disciplinary action is not on there.
Yeah. Was this, was this brought up just because there was nothing out there of a policy for this or?
So, we have the federal law that would allow a service animal, you know?
Right.
We wouldn't restrict that, but we wanted to have some language around there that may allow schools to bring in from time to time. But it allows parameters for that and prior approvals and so forth.
I believe our.
Yes.
Okay. So, for the benefit of the, of the committee, if, if it's, uh, if it, with the permission of the committee, um, our two National Red Ribbon, uh, Week Photo Contests have, have, have joined us. I'd like to just circle back to that item on the agenda with, as long as it's in the pleasure of the committee.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, uh, hi, guys. If you guys would, if you guys wanna come right on up, we got some chairs for you. Mom, you can come up too.
While the Roberts family is taking their seats, just to read the background for the benefit of the viewers, uh, Stacy Middle School students and siblings, Holly in grade seven and Paul in grade five are being recognized tonight as winners of the National Red Ribbon Week Photo Contest. They received a check, uh, for one thousand dollars to go toward drug prevention programs at Stacy Middle School, uh, and an iPad for their family. Uh, the photo contest takes place each year as part of a week-long drug prevention campaign known as National Red Ribbon Week. Uh, the students initially got involved with National Red Ribbon Week through the Young Marines, which I think you were there prior to coming here tonight, doing marine-type, uh, pushups and things, right? As they're starting to decorate their front door, this is at home, I presume, at your house, okay, uh, they decided to enter the contest. For the photo contest, Holly and Paul decorated their home's front door with ten different posters, each spreading a message to their community about the importance of living drug-free. So, that set as the background. Maybe tell us a little bit more. Tell the school committee, uh, we're excited to hear your story. Didn't decide on the way here who was gonna speak first?
Kind of.
Okay.
Uh, we decided that we would wanna participate in this. So, we came up with ideas on how to decorate each poster. And we then drew them out and taped them up. And then, we took a picture and posted it, um, onto the website. And then, we had to get people to vote for us, like, vote for the picture. And whoever got the most votes, uh, won the contest. So, like, we called all our relatives and we, um, like, posted on social media like that we were doing the contest, um, and to please help us to win. And we ended up winning for our, was it, region, for our. And we ended up winning for our, was it region, for our region. So it was pretty exciting.
That's great.
Nice.
And Paul, is that right?
Yes.
Paul, okay, just making sure I got your name right. Um, so Paul, what, how did you, how did you guys ultimately like kinda come up with the idea? What made you guys kinda just jump out and, and get involved in, in all these different types of activities?
Um, we, like, we got into the activity by, um, our young Marines leader told us that we should, um, if you wanted to, you could, um, just decorate your door, and we wanted to do it, because, uh, I don't really know why, but we just wanted to.
Excuse me. Why don't you tell him about the Marine that lost his life and that the whole, the whole reason why he did it. He went up in front of the Boy Scouts, he gave a speech, he did a great job. Tell him all that. Who's the, who's the Marine?
Um, his name is Enrique Camarena, and he died trying to get drugs off the streets. Uh, he dri, he died in Mexico, uh, by drug lords and.
What did he leave behind? His family?
Oh, yes, he, um, he, well, I can't remember.
I think he had two kids.
Yeah, I think they were.
They were young, they were young kids, so he left behind his, uh, wife and two kids.
Wow, well, that's.
But his lifelong goal was to keep drugs off the street. He was, um, he was an ex-Marine who was working for the government of, of the FBI trying to keep drugs off the streets.
Wow.
And so their family was the one who created the Red Ribbon Program to kinda keep his legacy moving on, because his goal was for, like, the youth of America to stay off drugs. So that was their goal with the Red Ribbon Campaign, was to spread the awareness of drugs and spread the awareness of his story and to kind of prevent drugs from being used throughout America.
Wow, that is, uh, that is quite a good, that's quite a story. That's certainly very, very, uh, I can understand why that would be motivating to you and, and, and what drew your inspiration on that. That's, that's fantastic, and what a great message you're sending to your, to your friends and, and to your peers and to you, even, and a lot of those that are older than you. What'd your friends think? What'd your friends say to you?
At first, when we got called down to the office, they said.
Ooh, you're in trouble.
Everyone just went, ooh, and everyone stared, and then, um, over the intercom, Ms. Angelini gave the announcement, and she said, let's give them a big, like, whoop, whoop, and everyone was, uh, after class, when we were switching, everyone was like coming up to me and like getting my face and like going like whoop, whoop, all on my face, and it was really funny. And lots of people said like congratulations, all my teachers said congratulations, and it was really exciting for us.
That's great.
The health teachers were very excited.
I'll bet. I'll bet. I'll open up any, anyone else from the, from the committee.
Did the two of you agree on how you were going to do it and work together well?
In the end.
In the end? Well, it's really, it's nice to see two siblings up here and that you were able to accomplish such a great goal together for, you know, for yourselves and for your school and your community, you did a great job.
Thank you.
So, thank you guys both, congratulations, that's fantastic. Um, what an amazing, what an amazing thing you guys did and really sent such a, such a great positive message to your peers. So, uh, always, always excited to hear about great things. So thank you guys both, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And, uh, and we look forward to seeing more from you guys in the for, in the future.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks guys, have a good night.
That's what I was gonna say, much for us in the future.
Alright, so we'll move back, uh, to our next agenda item, which is, uh, the report of the superintendent of schools. Bob, mid-year review.
Yes, I'll move quickly through this. This is, um, just a matter of protocol, this is step four of the evaluation process for superintendent. Um, this is the mid-cycles goal review, um, about midway, midway through the year in terms of this, uh, the time the school committee approved the goals in October to now. And this is give you an update on where we are, you have this in your packet, um, so I'm not gonna read, uh, read it verbatim, I'll just kind of highlight some, some things. Uh, also on your iPads, in the Dropbox, I believe Melissa made mention of this in a recent email, that we have created an evidence folder in there, so if you find that evidence folder, for each of the goals, uh, any evidence related to that, whether they be emails or PDF, uh, copies of, uh, anything, uh, it could be correspondence related to the goal, is all just warehouses or cataloged in there. Recall, in bad, past years, I've had a big binder passed around, and it's just cumbersome, at least now you have it on your iPad, so at your leisure, when you wanna, uh, as you begin to think toward my evaluation, you can refer back to that evidence file. So it is sorted alphabetically in there, uh, as you, uh, wanna look at that. Just to walk through each of these very quickly, um, the, the best practice is investigation project, this is, um, you know, will continue throughout the year, uh, so making some significant progress here, particularly around the one-to-one technology programs. We have, actually, we had a trip lined up this week to visit, um, Westwood Schools to see their, uh, implementation of Google Chromebooks, um, that with Snow, we had to cancel that, reschedule that trip. We are set up to go, uh, next week to North Attleboro, uh, for our technology task force to see, um, uh, the work they're doing there with Microsoft and how Microsoft, uh, tablets and iPad, uh, rather, Microsoft tablets and, and laptops are being used in, in that school district. So, and then again, all of these are ELL, Special Education, World Language Programs, we're trying to get our staff pushed out into these various, uh, districts, uh, been a little reluctant to do that lately since they've had so much time away from their classes, being mindful of that as well. Don't wanna have teachers out, outside of school all the time, uh, so that, but we, uh, with warmer weather coming and, uh, expect we'll have a chance to get out more, but we're well on our way, again, particularly with technology in that, in that category.
There's warmer weather coming?
I, I.
I'll take it.
Not next week, it's gonna be like fifteen below.
Do we have it tonight, no?
Fifteen below next week. I had nothing to do with the weather, by the way, but, you know, and I dread it more than you, I think, uh, although it worked out well for the Super Bowl Sunday, I'll say that. The greenhouse program development, um, the committee will recall, we received a two-thousand-dollar grant from the Hockamuck Area YMCA, I believe it's just the last meeting was acknowledged. I'm pleased to report that also, uh, they give us, I guess, poses as evidence toward completion of this goal, uh, we just received word, uh, last, uh, Friday, that the whole, the whole kids' foundation, the grant to which I applied for additional funds, another two-thousand-dollar award will be coming, a forthcoming for our school garden initiative. We've done some tours on this to see, um, again, just to reiterate, the plan for this is we have a very functional school garden that's maintained by our school food services, our pre-vocational students under now Nate Goucher, formerly Jen, um, uh, Jen's lead, um, those students now are, are taking those life skills and, um, cultivating that, obviously not, you know, in this weather. So that, the intention of the greenhouse is that we can have a year-round, uh, facility to do that. Looking to expand, uh, down the road, working with the high school, looking to expand also our science curriculum to allow for horticultural classes, agricultural-type work, not as a, you know, chapter seventy-four level of, of that, but it's an elective for students who may be interested in pursuing this, uh, just another pathway. Uh, we're partnering with the Milford Greenleaf Garden Club on this, and, um, it's been a great program for our students. Our school cafeteria is serving a lot of what we're planting, or had been planting. Um, the next step for us now in terms of the greenhouse program development, and as Joe, you expressed an interest of being as much a part of that as you possibly can be, and I do appreciate that, is to now be a vendor out here, the weather threw us off a bit with that, to price out a greenhouse, uh, in the back courtyard of Milford High School on the second level. Be about a sixty, so it's about a sixty-five foot, uh, expanse there, uh, the greenhouse would be somewhere in that, it would be, right now, it's not a usable, uh, means of egress, uh, presuming you can handle the live load, would be a great opportunity, has the great, um, the, the, the kind of sun we need for, you know, for growing, uh, vegetables and things. Uh, so we're looking at still having that happen coming in this fall, so we've made some significant progress. We've attended some very interesting conferences this year, uh, one was an agricultural, I don't even know what it was called, but we were definitely out of our league, uh, when we attended this, and the conversation was in a totally different direction than we had anticipated, so, yeah, you win some, you lose some. Uh, but we, but we went there and, and made some contacts, uh, at any rate. There's also some work, just one last comment on this greenhouse initiative, um, with Boston University as well, we, we, part of what we're trying to accomplish is expanding our school, and we've reached well into the, uh, to the two-year programs, QCC, Quincy Community College, and Mass Bay as two examples, but also now looking to branch out to our four-year institutions as well. And we have a woman that we're working with now who's, uh, uh, working with Boston University to give our students and train our teachers. So as we have this program and we identify staff in the science department, for example, um, we can now have those teachers at no cost trained at Boston University to now manage the greenhouse and, and, and understand, uh, the work that's involved with that. So it's a really exciting development, uh, to see happen.
And it, on the, with regards to the greenhouse, is it literally just, is it the actual construction of a garden that you're looking for additional support on?
It is, it's actually the actual physical greenhouse structure, so we don't have a press on that.
We talked about like, what I, so here's what I'm asking. Is it a physical structure that requires contractors and architects and things like that, or are you talking about building a garden?
No, it's, well, we haven't, we, okay, so if you're thinking of like a, um, like a community garden.
Yes.
That's not what we're talking about.
Okay, that's what I'm looking, what I'm thinking, the reason why I'm asking is this, it, I, what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, is this a construction project where we need to make sure we're hiring contractors and everything else, or is this something that we wanna reach out to Eagle Scout, but, to Boy Scout troops and see if somebody wants to take it on as an Eagle Scout project?
Yeah, I actually have talked to some Eagle Scout, um, um, candidates about this project. I think it's beyond their scope of ability, just because it requires these engineering component of the, of the structural piece and the engineer, the live load of that space. Um, but it's a little confusing because greenhouse and, and school gardens are sort of used synonymously. Um, they are a bit different, we have these greenhouse, we have these garden, um, boxes, these sort of, um, like a garden that's ra, raised bed. Uh, we have a grow lab here in the high school, for those of you who went to Milford High School, remember, it's still the same, we've just now reactivated that, uh, that area in our high school, which is, which is really fantastic. Uh, this now puts us in, to build a structure, we don't know exactly if we'll need an architect, or is it a prefabricated, that you just give them the dimensions and they can just retrofit it to fit the high school. Um, I'm sure there'll be all kinds of conversations left to have about, you know, building code and zoning and so forth. Uh, we have yet to see all that, we're working with Rob Quinn on that, he'll be bringing a vendor in, just get us some cost estimates, and then we can see about funding that through some, uh, possibly some grants or private donors. Uh, but it's, it's really, uh, a great opportunity for, there's a number of our students that really miss this right now, and the warmer weather we had in the fall, they were out there every day watering it and growing it. It's just something, uh, really sort of special about, you know, growing something from a seedling and actually cultivating it, you know, and picking it and then having it served in our food service program. It's a, uh, it's really exciting for our, for our students and for, uh, and for me. So that's the greenhouse program development. If any questions on that or comments, and I'll just continue moving on. The robotics program, you saw that firsthand with Rich Johnson, Paul Peliquin, I won't go into much detail on that. We are, we have done, uh, against, this is significant, significant accomplishments in this area in terms of, uh, the meetings we had, we're continuing to have those discussions, particularly around the time we look to transition Middle School East and Stacy Middle School. I will say there's a, a gap. You have a, a robotics program that happens after school with Paul Peliquin, an additional section, Paul couldn't teach a spring section, but it's such student interest of robotics that Terry Bowen has stepped up, we're offering a second semester of robotics for students at Stacy, even though Paul can't do it, I, I wanna thank Terry for, for stepping up to do that. However, in eighth grade, there is no robotics program or after-school program, but we're looking to somehow build that bridge as we transition, and that should be a natural solution when we move eighth grade to Stacy Middle School. Uh, but there is certainly a program at Milford High School as an elective, and then Rich is looking to, Rich Johnson's looking to offer, uh, an after-school, uh, option as well for students who really wanna take this to the next level. The next year's plan is to start being competitive with this. I, you know, it's the competitive nature that I have as well, is that we do this with our athletics, we're proud of it, why shouldn't we do this as well with robotics and, and jump into the game? So at the younger level, first, first Lego robotics, and at the higher level, uh, the first tech challenge, and pushing our kids in that direction to be competing at that level. So we're well on our way in that regard. Any questions, comments?
That's great.
No, it's great. Okay, um, again, I, then again, there's, there again, there's evidence of all of this in the evidence file, if you have any questions on that, you know, uh, at any future meeting, or as you look at it, feel free to call me or email me, and I'll, uh, happy to explain. Uh, the World Language Program expansion, um, we're, this is what we've been doing, we just, we just rolled out through the Community School Use Program through their partnership, uh, a before-school program, uh, for students. We had a number of families that expressed interest. Part of this, um, was to get a survey from families, would there be interest among families in Milford to do a program for enrichment, uh, and if so, in what language? The results were, were really quite interesting, um, and we chose to run this program as a before-school program because of so many things that are happening after school for students, they're already overextended in my view, and so if it's something before school, however, it was an early program, seven AM, um, we worked out to try to make it as attractive as possible, parents could drop off the children, uh, at the school, uh, for seven AM for class, we'd provide them with a breakfast through the Community School Use Program, and then transport them to their respective school after the eight o'clock program, so they'd be supervised the entire time. Uh, we partnered with, um, a Boston learning company, uh, that specializes in a program called Burlitz, the Burlitz Program. Uh, we ran into a kink on this, um, because we felt like the vision that we had for the program was not matched by the quality of the instruction that we saw. So we decided to, uh, at this point, table this, this is why this one has sort of a lower standing than the others, where there's significant progress, this is some progress. We were gaining great traction on this until fairly recently, um, so rather than try to do this haphazardly, we're gonna reimburse the families who signed up for the program, and we're gonna run this program with in-house staff. And the reason why we think we can do that is the, uh, the interest of language was predominantly Portuguese. Uh, of course, I wanna say there's like twelve or, twelve or more families that had signed their children up to learn Portuguese, and, and it, it almost, it's very unusual, it's striking to me, because when you looked at the response rate from families from the survey, Portuguese is about fourth on the list, but yet the parents that came out to actually sign up for the program was Portuguese. So we really wanna make, then our, my goal in working with Lenny as well on that was to offer any family, not only just the students, but their, their parents, so they could help them at home, give them access to this language learning in whatever language they wanted. So if a child, if it was just one student who wanted Mandarin, I was committed to helping that child learn that language, and I still am. Um, but for a, a number of reasons, we decided to part ways, uh, with Burlitz and just do this in-house. So it will likely be, uh, a goal that I will not fully meet this year, um, probably until the summertime, when we roll this out and do this correctly. It's really important that we do this right the first time, and we sensed very early on, a week into it, this was not the quality program we wanted in Milford, and we parted ways. So that's the, uh, the truth landing on the world language, but still very much an interest of ours, the parents, we've communicated with all the families, and they respect that decision as well. Any questions or comments? I know I'm gonna a little bit quickly through this, but, you know, you've heard these over and over again, so I don't wanna belabor, and I will say beat a horse, because you just talked about mini horses, so it seems cruel, so.
You just proved an animal fast, you cannot beat a horse.
The, uh, Technology Integration Task Force, I, uh, just alluded to this a moment ago with the one-to-one initiative, so it's, it's really self-explanatory there. This task force includes, um, I believe I mentioned this at the last meeting, uh, certainly Kevin, myself, Kathy, uh, Paul Blavis is on that group, all of our technology teachers are part of this Technology Integration, uh, Task Force to look at the best way to move forward, particularly, uh, in anticipation of Woodland School opening, uh, in two thousand sixteen. So again, that's references the earlier discussion, uh, we'll give updates as those updates happen, and right now, we're in the school visitation phase, but I recall updating the committee on this prior meeting, so none of this should be, should come as a surprise, I don't think. The Middle School East Reuse Committee, uh, Scott, you know, well, as much about this as I do, we're on this, uh, together.
Yes.
We've not met, uh, since the last meeting.
If we could avoid blizzards, that would be great.
I'm trying.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've.
We're making some progress there.
That, that's, that's a, that's a little bit longer process, and, uh, it was one of the things that I had shared with you when you, when we did this as well, my concern with having this as part of your goals is, um, a, a good piece of this may be outside of your control.
Yeah. As far as the portion that, um, that, and I'll kind of include Scott in on this, is, is part of the, I guess, the education subcommittee of this committee.
Mm-hmm.
I think we've fulfilled in many respects what we're looking to bring to the table. I think we're now waiting on the report that will come about the facility itself, and our hands are kinda tied until that happens in terms of future use. Any comments or, okay, that's, that even covers the subcommittee updates, we even.
Sort of, yeah.
Knocked that one out. And, uh, unless there are any questions or comments beyond that, that's the mid-year progress report, so, uh, eyes on the prize, very, very much on task.
Great. Any questions or comments from the committee? Thanks, Bob.
Thanks for watching.
Up next, we have, uh, Kathy, you're up, reported the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
Uh, I do, I have for the committee this evening, uh, four warrant, warrants for your approval. The first warrant is in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, take a motion from Dawn, second from Joe, all in favor? Motion passes.
Second warrant is in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, ten dollars and seventy-three cents.
Okay, take a motion from Jen, second from Dawn, all in favor? Okay.
The third warrant is in the amount of thirteen thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-five cents.
Okay, take a motion from Joey, second from Joe, all in favor? Motion passes.
And the last warrant is in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
Okay, take a motion from Jen, second from Dawn, all in favor? Motion passes.
I do ask the committee to approve a course reimbursement request in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay, any questions from the committee? Motion from Dawn, second from Jen, all in favor? Motion carries.
The committee also has for the review, for their review, a list of the latest appointments from our previous school committee meeting. I do have an out-of-state field trip request from Mr. Kizo, a grade-two memorial teacher. He would like to take eighty-five students, grade-two at Memorial, to the Biomes Marine Biology Center in North Kingston, Rhode Island, North Kingstown, Rhode Island. And that would happen on March twenty-fourth, and it would be for the day at a cost of nine dollars per student. It is out-of-state, so it does require the school committee's approval.
How many, how many chaperones does he have?
It's one to ten ratio for, for.
One for five.
One for five at the elementary level.
And he has them?
Yes.
He's got them already?
You want to go?
No, I just want to tell him, when I hear one teacher's taking eighty-five.
Eighty-five second graders.
But it's, but it's Vinnie, you know, he could.
Wow, bless him.
Yeah, he, they have to comply with the chaperone ratio, so maybe we'll make sure that he's got enough chaperones, Kathy, if you don't mind.
There's twenty-five adults going.
Oh, there's twenty-five adults.
That's great.
Wow. Any other questions?
No, okay.
Motion from Joe, second from Jen, all in favor? Motion passes, have a great time.
And there is a gift.
There is a gift, I know we have a gift. Kathy, I know that, and I can bring this up under old business, will you be able to give us a quick technology touch base as well? As we talked about at our last meeting after Paul, we talked about the month of February is when a lot of work's going to get done on technology updates, we can do that under when we get to old business, I just wanted to give a heads up on it. We do have a gift this evening, it is a very generous gift from Alvin and Company Incorporated, it's a gift in kind, it's for various art and office supplies, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Which is very, very, very generous, and it looks like that is the only gift here this evening, so we do need a motion and, to accept it. Motion from Dawn, second from Joe, all in favor? Thank you so much, and thank you so much, through a, again, very generous gift. That motion does pass, Bob, if we can make sure we send a thank you note?
Always do, yeah.
Thank you. And up next, we have Dr. McIntyre, Kevin, you're up, reported the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, so curriculum metrics and progress.
I just want to update the committee on the curriculum mapping progress, we're going to talk about our go-forward plan. The goal is to create interactive curriculum maps at each grade level and in each content area that are accessible to all teachers. A lot of this is going to be reformatting and restructuring the current maps we have, and migrating them into an online kind of vehicle, I'm going to talk about that vehicle. Where, where, we, the, the curriculum mapping process is kind of a, an ongoing and iterative process, so every year they're being updated, changed, and shifted. And we have the next generation science standards coming online, as well as adjustments to the two thousand eleven standards, which are, you know, commonly called the Common Core standards. So the vehicles and the goals, the vehicle for the mapping is Edwin Teaching and Learning, and we just received approval, I want to say two and a half weeks ago, to have access to the Edwin Teaching and Learning piece of the, of the program. And that's been a much longer process than I anticipated, it took us about nine months from initial request to getting access two and a half weeks ago. And right now, we're in the process of piloting that, and we have a, a number of teachers who've stepped up that are very interested in piloting different aspects of it. There's four levels of mapping, we have district-level vertical maps, which incorporate K through twelve, year-long maps, unit plans, and lesson plans. The framework we're looking at is understanding by design, which is, which is a very common kind of lesson and unit planning philosophy or, or program. And we have a number of models, we have our current maps, we have model curriculum units, we have the understanding by design templates, we have the Massachusetts Department of Education templates, and we have the Edwin Teaching and Learning templates. And again, the goal is to migrate the year-long maps into Edwin Teaching and Learning by August two thousand fifteen. And Sarah Boyle, our Technology Integration teacher, is in the process of, of putting a few maps up there in a couple of different formats to see how it works. Develop district-level vertical maps for English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, Social Studies, History, Technology and Computer Science, Art and Music by the completion of the two thousand fifteen and sixteen school year. And we've begun that work in a couple of areas, and that's what some of those vertical committees that I've been reporting to the school committee on, some of the work that they're doing. And then we want to set realistic goals by department for unit plan migration this spring. So the steps in the process is, we, we need to train the teachers in the use of Edwin Teaching and Learning, and part of that's going to happen through the pilot process. Some of it's going to be individually done because they have a lot of online tutorials, they have a thing called Think Gate University, Think Gate's the company that develops Edwin Teaching and Learning. And also Sarah Boyle is going to develop a number of courses that help our teachers kind of learn how to use it. Which boils down a lot of that information into kind of a quicker, more, kind of efficient way of kind of jumping into the, into the new platform. We need to implement a standards audit for each year-long map, and what that means is basically looking at the state standards, and in some cases, national standards, if there's no state standards in place. And just going through each map and making sure that we're meeting, whether the state or the national standards in a particular area. We have to migrate the maps into the Edwin system. And then vertical departments need to build the K-12 vertical maps, and this, this process is reviewing data, looking at standards, and looking at assessments. And you're connecting kind of a full map, K through twelve, with assessments, and you, you almost have a flawless transition year to year. The curriculum team will set goals for the review and migration of unit plans. We're going to publish the year-long curriculum maps and vertical maps either on the district website or the X two parent portal. So anybody who is interested in looking at a map at a particular grade level can just jump right online and do it. And if they have questions about any aspect of the curriculum, they're able to ask the teacher, a curriculum team leader, a principal, or myself. And then teachers will attach the lesson plans and resources to unit plans on their Edwin pages, and that won't be public, that'll be just the teacher's resource. So the public piece will be the, the actual year-long curriculum maps, kind of a high-level view of what, what a particular course looks like over, over, over a year. I've shown this slide before, but I just wanted to jump in because it, it kind of focuses the curriculum mapping work, is what does we want our students to know and be able to do? How will we know our students are learning? How will we, how will we respond when students do not learn? And how will we extend and enrich the learning for our students who are, who are proficient? And that's kind of a lot, these questions are kind of driving the curriculum map process, and it, and it's, and like I said, it's an ongoing process. Even when the maps are up, we're going to continually relook at them year after year. And we'll, we'll make adjustments based on state testing data, common assessments, and any changes that occur to, to standards, quite frankly. The curriculum maps are a communication tool, grade-level teams will examine the maps to see what occurs in the content area for an entire year. Teachers within the building will use the maps for a true picture of what students experience from grade to grade. So the vehicle we're using is Edwin Teaching and Learning, and I want to share just some, just some quick pictures of what the, what the platform looks like. And I'm going to have Sarah Boyle come to a future meeting and actually demonstrate some of the functionality of, of the system. So this, this, this platform allows for instructional planning, it's a digital database of resources. The state has developed, I think, ninety-nine or a hundred and nine model curriculum units across K through twelve, and all the teachers will have access to that online. PBS media resources, online assessments, so the teachers can actually develop assessments that students can take on the computers. When we move to a one-to-one platform, they'll be able to, to, to develop these assessments and push them out to the students on whatever device they're, they're actually using. They can also develop the assessments and just give a paper and pencil version as, as well. And then it also has a number of analytic tools where they can actually put the assessment information into a program, and it'll kind of spit out really nice reports and information about. How are students meeting standards, what are the areas of strength, what are the areas of challenge? And it allows them a number of different levels for the teachers to analyze the student work very quickly. So this is just an example of, it's the, the Edwin system is connected to X two. And part of the, part of the reason why it took so long to get us to where we needed to go is we went through a process called CIF compliance. And what that, what, what that was is it, it kind of links our data, our student management data, to the state student management system. So as soon as we were connected, X two populated every teacher's Edwin account, basically, with the students they have in their classes. So there's no kind of clunky downloading of, of student information or data, it's, it's already in there. There's a number of instructional planning and digital resources, and it's kind of hard to see on this picture, and like I said, Sarah's going to come back, but, but basically it breaks. It breaks down what a teacher would have access to from year-long curriculum maps to unit plans to lesson plans, pacing documents, any resources connected to those plans. Would all be kind of housed on, on, on a teacher's individual page, so if you were a ninth-grade English teacher, you would have the ninth-grade curriculum maps. You would have your unit plans and your lesson plans, and then any digital or assessment resources all housed in, in one spot. Assessment creation and administration, there's a number of question databases that we have access to free through this program. And there are also a number of other question databases that, you, you'll put in a particular standard or two standards. And it'll create a test for you, basically, based on what, what you're doing, so it'll be a great way for teachers to work together and quickly come up with, you know, PARC-type questions for mathematics, or ELA, or science. That could become common assessments potentially. And then they also have tools for analyzing those assessments, which is, these are just two examples of some of the analytic tools that they have as part of this program and platform. So the framework we're using is understanding by design, and I want to just give the committee a sense of. Of, of, of kind of the, the main aspects of the understanding by design framework. There's really three stages, it's identifying the desired results, determining assessment evidence, and then planned learning experiences and instruction. And when we look at identifying desired results, we want, again, what should students know and be able to do? What's the ultimate transfer we seek as a result of this unit? What do we want the students to kind of walk away with? What enduring understandings are desired, and what essential questions will be explored in depth and provide focus to all learning? And we have a number of current resources we're using, including our current curriculum maps. Determining, determining assessment evidence, how will we know if students have achieved the desired results based on, based on kind of the learning goals? Will we accept a student, as evidence of student understanding and their ability to use their learning in new situations? We want students to be able to transfer this learning from, not just to be able to do it on a test, but to apply it wherever they are. So what, what are the transferable skills? And then how will we evaluate student performance in fair and consistent ways? And again, we've got a number of those pieces in place already, we have the assessment grid at the K through five level, common assessments across the district. Secondary course exams, we have a number of state and national summative assessments, commercial assessments, and then school-based data teams will, will review a lot of this information and provide feedback to, to the school at large. And then planned learning experiences and instruction, the last phase, how will we support learners as they come to understand important ideas and processes? How will we prepare them to autonomous, autonomously transfer their learning? And what enable, enabling knowledge and skills will students need to perform effectively and achieve desired results? And that basically brings it down to the lesson planning stage of the process, so the day-to-day classroom piece. And that's kind of, that's kind of the go-forward process, and again, I want to give you kind of a really quick, high-level overview, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the committee?
I was, I was just curious, Kevin.
Sure.
When teachers start to do the lesson planning.
Mm-hmm.
Will they have the models at their disposal, so they'll be able to, they'll know the expectations for the mapping?
Yeah, we're going to do, we're going to do some courses attached to this process. And we're going to spend a lot of time as part of the curriculum team and push it out to the buildings from, from that perspective. But it's, the, the, when we get down to the, I think we can very quickly, by the end of the summer, get the high-level kind of year-long plans up on the, on the Edwin system. It's going to take us probab, it's, it's going to be probably a two to three-year process to get kind of unit plans across the board that people probably feel comfortable with and, and really good about. And, and that's in terms of formatting and expectations, not to say that there aren't great unit plans and lesson plans here, but it takes a while to migrate something into the system.
And then in terms of just the way it's going to roll out, have you thought at all, at the elementary level, where the teachers are responsible for every curriculum area? Were you thinking they would focus on a curriculum area first, or look at every curriculum area and focus on one stage of curriculum development?
I think we're probably going to start with, with math and ELA at the elementary level. And we've got those committees already in place that are starting to kind of talk about that work, at least from the vertical perspective, K through twelve. And, and it, it is a bigger job, the curriculum mapping piece is a bigger job at the elementary level because they have to be all things to all people.
I mean, I, I'm just so happy that we're going to this model, I think, in, in the fact that we can get this as a free from the state.
It is free.
And, you know, it's a, having no cost, and just having the expectation and the understanding of those common expectations. You know, when you talk to parents, you hear, oh, my teacher's doing this, my teacher's doing that, and when there's thirteen classes of second grade and they're all in one building, and you think they're all doing something different. This just really brings that to light for teachers and really helps frame that consistency towards the frameworks, so.
And, and we're trying to do that without, without killing that creativity that happens in the classroom too, so there's, there's a, there's a balance we're trying to strike.
Yeah, I think it's, it's great, great movement forward.
What's the feedback from the teachers on this, have they seen this?
So we've had a number of meetings, we've brought, we've brought a number of teachers to different Edwin meetings over the last couple of years. Everybody sees the need of getting the curriculum maps into kind of one format and one place. Yesterday, I handed Sarah Boyle, who's our Technology Integration teacher, four binders that were about this thick of the different, kind of hard copies of the curriculum maps, K through twelve. To kind of get a sense of what's out there and how we're going to kind of start to migrate it in, and she's, she's taken a stab at a couple of. At a couple of grade levels, just to kind of, just to kind of put it into the system, so she knows, so she's gone through the process before she works with the teachers to go through the process. I think there's, the feedback I hear consistently is that we need kind of one format, K through twelve. We need kind of a consistent handoff of curriculum from K to one, one to two, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think there's a real need for this, the real challenge with kind of a project of this breadth is really, how do we find the time? How do we set realistic timelines to get it done? With the understanding that we've got district determined measures, we've got the new evaluation system, we've got PARC coming online, we've got teaching strategies goal at the kindergarten level. And I could probably rattle off twenty or thirty different things that are, that are taking people's time, I mean, the, the science teachers are kind of consumed with the next generation science standards and what, what's that going to look like day-to-day in the curriculum? So that, that's really going to be the challenge with this project, I think that, I, I think you talk to most teachers and they're going to say, there's, there's definitely a need to kind of get. Kind of a coherent K to twelve curriculum articulated in a consistent format that is easily understandable to any stakeholder who wants to take a look at it. But also useful and dynamic for teachers kind of day-to-day. And I think Edwin produces a lot of the tools that, that'll, that'll make this happen, and I'm particularly, particularly excited about the assessment piece. And we've already had, I think, thirty or forty teachers who've jumped up and said, you know, I'm, I'm dying to, you know, dig my hands into at least this assessment piece. With the reality of whether it's PARC or MCAS going forward, we want to, we want to almost set some kind of an expectation. For having an online test experience at each grade level and each subject area once or twice a year, once we get to the point where we have the capability to do that.
I guess the reason, when I look at, anytime we go through a lot of this, these types of projects, I, I kind of look at it with two things. And in talking with a lot of teachers, I know they're, they're kind of thinking all in the same lines, which is, does it help improve the education for our students? And that's resoundingly what I hear from teachers, that's where their mind goes to first. It's going to make my, is it going to, is it going to let the kids' education improve? So that's one, and two, does it help the teachers to be better at their job? And they're, and they, and they don't even go to the, does it make my life easier, does it, that's not where they're, at least not the feedback that I've gotten, is, but. Just not specific to this initiative, but just all the things that you just listed off.
Abso- absolutely.
I definitely have gotten the sense at times from some of the things that we're trying, that are trying to be rolled out, where I'm always cautious, are we trying to boil the ocean all at once? So I, I got, I guess I, I kind of go back to the, does it improve the education of our students? And you've, you've illustrated that, I think, very well, that this, you believe that this will. Does it make, does it help our teachers to be better teachers, is I guess my next question on that.
And I, and I would say that having a curriculum map, the access to unit plans, the access to lesson plans. We have, you know, the, the new ability to common plan at the elementary level that we put in place this year. I, I think it's just going to make teachers stronger because they're going to have conversations about common assessments, they're going to have conversations about their lesson plans or unit plans. And I think it's going to create, the tricky thing about curriculum is it, it's a word that people throw around all the time, but it's kind of like a thousand voices shouting at once. And it's very difficult to understand what's being said, and I think this is going to kind of create some clarity, which I think is going to help. and it's very difficult to understand what's being said, and I think this is gonna kind of create some clarity, which I think is gonna help ultimately. And, and, and it's something we're probably gonna have to go through every, you know, three to five years, where we're gonna have to kind of just look at the curriculum, look at the data, and make adjustments, and we do that, we do that now across the board, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna um infer that we don't do that now, but I like to do it in a very formalized process. So that, like, if, if principals um are giving um, are putting some structure to some of the common planning discussions, they could say, jeez, I'd really like you to look at unit three for ELA, because based on, you know, testing, or based on the writing, or whatever the case may be, we really want to strengthen that, or we really want to have a conversation about that to see if we need to make some adjustments. And I think if we have that coherent document that everybody could just, you know, type in their username and password and get on there and have a conversation and share some resources, I think it's going to make, I, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna make, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a difficult process to actually get everything up there, I don't wanna, I don't wanna kind of, you know, paint, paint an unrealistic picture, but I think once it's there, it's gonna be a great tool and a great vehicle for us to use.
Okay, yeah, I think, I just, my, my ask would be that we just uh, we'd be mindful and, and look, and look to solicit teacher feedback and input on, along this process, knowing that um, you know, though they might not be asking for how we make their life a little easier to get them to be able to do their job better.
And slow and steady is.
Yeah, if we're gonna look at things that make their life easier, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Uh if we look at, make things that go, wow, this is gonna be really painful, but we'll get there, that's where I would just, I would cause.
I, I, you know, it's. It's just gonna take work to get it in there, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna say it's, it's gonna be easy, but as much support that we can provide to do that. And that's why we've got Sarah Boyle, who's great with technology.
Yeah.
You know, really getting to know the system so she can really provide that support and help teachers get those initial kind of year-long maps in there.
Okay, good. All right, thank you Kevin.
Great, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to uh subcommittee updates, um athletics.
Uh we've canceled our meeting today, Peter is apparently sick.
Ah, okay. Hopefully he feels better soon.
Hopefully.
Uh policy, we heard from you guys, I don't know if there's any other updates?
No other updates, our next meeting um has been postponed to March.
Ah, okay, get us past blizzards.
Yeah, get us past union stuff.
Get us past contract negotiations, even better. You're optimistic, we're gonna be done by March, that's pretty good. Um wellness, Mike's not here um this evening, safety and security, Dawn?
We have a meeting coming up uh in March second, early March, we're gonna have Lobby Guard do a presentation, they're flying representative votes. It was March twelfth, yeah.
Okay.
Lobby Guard presentation.
All right, uh we went through middle school reuse, we did not have a meeting, we will not have a meeting for the month of February. It was canceled on account of Mother Nature. Woodland School Building Project.
Yeah, we met last night, uh that project is still uh on time, if not ahead of time, last check was gonna be March, uh mid-March or so. It sounds like we have a possible groundbreaking early March, but now we have to have the weather cooperate. Just get rid of this nine-feet of snow we have, uh but we are, we are well on target for that project.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Uh future agenda items, I got from you Kevin already that you're looking to bring Sarah Boyle in for a future one. We would just incorporate that, just ask that you, just let the, let the chair know when you're ready to do that. And we'll just incorporate that as part of your presentation. Um any other members have anything for future agenda items?
I think based on what we had tonight, um in our previous meeting with the finance committee, we may need to add financial update, possible discussion with Mark and/or Zach Taylor for the future meeting.
Yep, I think there's gonna be a, we're, we may need to look as well um at possibly doing another budget meeting, very similar to what we did on a Saturday.
I think that would.
Um I think if we can start to look at our calendars here and help coordinate that, um for when we could do another one of those types of meetings.
Melissa circulated some date options for.
That would be.
Saturday still okay to do that again? Well, it's a bit of a haul for you. We can all go to Maine, I suppose.
I don't know how it works with everybody, but maybe a Thursday before school committee?
We could do that too.
Because we've already vetted all of the principals' budgets, so therefore it would really be.
And we'll do some light work on various scenarios.
Yeah, I mean, if you can work with Melissa and just coordinate all amongst members, toss out a couple of dates, other
Okay.
um combination of Saturdays as well as before-school committee meetings, I think that works very well. Uh and obviously, as we always do in the past, if any members have any recommendations for time, certainly throw that out to Melissa as well. All right, we'll move on to uh any old business. Any member have any old business? Kathy, I just have one piece of old business, and it just, we talked about it the last meeting, and I'd said we were gonna find, we were looking for when Paul came before us for technology, we'd allocated, uh we'd approved the money to do the mapping. Mapping was supposed to be done, it's supposed to take, um supposed to start on February second, which was a couple of days ago. That's what the start date was, and it was supposed to take two or three weeks, so we're a couple of days in. Do you have any updates on where we are? It sounds like we already have a cost, so that's good.
Uh we do, we have, uh there's two good news. Uh one piece of it is that the vendor that we went with, uh Wally Computer, is local, which is always nice to use a local vendor. I did make a call, Wally, because they're on the state bid list, which is the second good piece of information, they would be um eligible for the E-rate reimbursement, so whatever work we do with Wally, um particularly around the hardware piece, will be eligible for E-rate. The E-rate um staff highly recommend Wally to me when I made the reach out, so that's the good news. I do not believe, um I'd have to follow up maybe at our next meeting, I have not seen any of the Wally staff in our buildings as of yet. Um so that really would be under Paul's direction, so I could follow up with him and, and get an update out to the committee when the actual date will be that they'll be in our buildings.
If you'll do that, that would be great, it's been now two weeks since our last meeting. Um and the, the commitment that was made to us by Paul at that time was that that work would begin on February second. I realize we've had a couple of winter, uh winter storm events, but um my concern is the, the clock is ticking.
I'll be happy to do that.
And just get that out to the committee, that would be great, and uh also Kathy, for a future agenda item, we'll just incorporate that as part of your next February one as well, the next one in February as well.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Any members have any other old business? Uh so the next item on the agenda is adjournment, we do have an executive session this evening, uh but we'll take a motion to uh for adjournment, motion from Joe, from Joey, second from Jen, all in favor? Thank you so much, we will not be returning, we will be moving into executive session, the purpose of which is for MTA contract negotiations. Uh the reason we will need to move into executive session is that to discuss this in public form would weaken our position. Um we will not be returning, have a great night everyone, thank you so much.